Go ahead and call to order this strategic planning workshop on February the 27th at 8:30 a.m. I want to welcome everyone to City Hall, Council chambers, as well as those that are online. Real quick here, make sure I certify a quorum. We've got Councilmember Owens, Mayor Pro Tim Hernandez, Councilmember Carbone, and Councilmember Orlando present in the chambers. And we've got Councilmember Perez and Councilmember Kamkar online. So we've got a quorum present. Next, moving into our agenda, we've got citizens comments. So I'm going to turn that over to Mayor Pro Tim Hernandez to introduce those who have signed up to speak. And I don't believe we got anybody online to speak. Is that correct?
Yes, Mayor, I did not see anyone, but I am checking that right now. With us here in chambers, we do have three speakers signed up. And so while I'm checking for the online, I will call up the first speaker that is with us, Ms. Megan Kendrick. You would please state your name and address for the record and limit your comments to three minutes. We will display a timer for you as well, so you can keep an eye on the timer. Thank you for being here.
Hello, my name's Megan Kendrick. I'm from 5004 Combs Neil Street. I would like you to consider pair transit for people with disabilities. I am, well, one have would graciously appreciate having it. I have, as I have autism and I can't drive, and I would like to be able to go places without having my mom or dad to ask for a ride and for them if they're not available. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kendrick. We appreciate you being here and for those comments. Mayor, next, we have Ms. Mary Kendrick. You would, again, please state your name and address for the record and limit your comments to three minutes. I will let you know whenever you have 30 seconds remaining.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Well, my name is Mary Kendrick. I live at 5004 Combs Neil. I would like to thank Mayor Cole and members of the City Council for allowing me to introduce a subject that is very important to many Pearland residents. According to the latest Bureau of Census statistics, there are over 13,000 senior citizens and over 10,500 Pearland residents who have been determined to have a disability. Many of us cannot drive. Mayor Cole has seen the need for an inclusive part dedicated for children with disabilities. Many of these children will not be able to drive when they become adults. For those of us who cannot drive, the lack of public transportation in Pearland requires that we depend upon shared ride services, which can be rather expensive, or requesting transportation from family or friends. Since the advent of COVID-19, our ability to depend upon family and friends have been decreased. Therefore, many of us are facing a true hardship. In the past, I lived in Austin and Abilene where pair transit was readily available. Even in the small town of Livingston, my sister has access to pair transit. This service is available in many smaller cities such as Angleton, Lake Jackson, Texas City, and Sugar Land. So why not in Pearland? I would like to request that the city of Pearland introduce this service. I would be willing to work on a committee dedicated for public, for pair transportation. I realize that I have neglected to explain what pair transit is. This is a service where riders who have been determined eligible can request transportation. This is not a free taxi service. Riders must pay a reasonable rate for each leg of their trip. In the past, I used pair transit and had independence. Since moving to this great city of Pearland, I have lost my independence. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kendrick. We appreciate your suggestions and input. While we cannot respond directly at this point, we can talk to staff and have them respond as well. And we will reach out afterwards as well. Thank you. Next, Mayor, we have Mr. Jimmy Davis. Mr. Davis, if you would, you know, state your name and address for the record and limit your comments to three minutes, please. Thank you for being here.
Jimmy Davis, 5004 Combs Neil Street, Pearland. The city of Pearland is a unique city in our area. We are attracting new businesses and seeking to bring in cutting-edge companies. We have a diversity in our community that many cities would be envious of. We are attracting the best and brightest who want to call Pearland home. Many companies in the last decade have taken corporate environmental stewardship seriously. Companies are realizing they have a role in protecting our planet and being more sustainable. Many companies, when building new facilities, seek LEED certifications, and that's commendable. They want to do the right thing in this area. But what's the city of Pearland doing? We have many building projects going on. Has the city of Pearland adopted a culture of being environmentally responsible when building our facilities? Are we pursuing LEED certifications so when companies are considering us for their headquarters or new facilities, they can see our commitment to environmental responsibility? What kind of tax revenue impacts could that have for the city long term? When they pick us because they see our commitment in this area? What are we doing about water conservation? Each month, we pump millions of gallons of water out of the ground into emergency storage tanks, only till later that month, empty those tanks out because the water's been sitting there and the chemicals have separated. It goes into our ditches and it ends up in Galveston. We pay a lot of money to add, to add water to the Gulf of Mexico. Why are we doing that? Can we take some of our money that we have, some of the money we spend, and look at retrofitting our existing emergency storage tanks? Maybe look so we're not dumping our precious resource into the ditches and into the Gulf? How much savings could we recognize by not dumping these millions of gallons of water? What would that do to our water loss numbers that we have to report to the TWDB? Or TWBD, sorry. No, TWDB. What, what kind of savings would we see if we weren't doing that, dumping those millions of gallons out? What kind of financial savings? This is the resident's resource and commodity going down the ditch. I encourage City of Pearland to adopt a culture of environmental stewardship and to look at areas that we can invest perhaps a little bit more money that can bring more tax dollars into the city from businesses investing here and that can save one of our precious resources. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. And Mayor, that does conclude the speakers we have with us. Thank you all for being here and for your comments.
Thank you. Thank you to all the speakers this morning. Very informative. Pair of transit is certainly something we should be taking a look at for many of our residents. And I appreciate the numbers that you, that you shared with us because that helps put things into context. And I would ask maybe Mr. Epperson to get with Mr. Davis on some of our policies regarding buildings for the city. I know we passed policies 13, 14 years ago that the city's buildings would, may not go out and get certification because we don't necessarily want to pay money for a plaque, but we want to build the buildings to the, to the energy levels that we've been, that he was talking about. So maybe get with him, maybe share here with him some of those policies that we set up, I know, years ago. So it might work. Moving on in our agenda, and before, before we get too far down the line, I will state for the public that at about 10:05 or so, I've got to go upstairs and get on a quick Zoom call and back. We've got a disabled veteran here in our community that is having a house presented to him and I'm participating in a, in a brief ceremony at about 10:15 online for that. So I'll bug out for just a few minutes and then back in. So I'll beg your forgiveness now for stepping out and back in. So with that, we're going to move forward. Purpose of our meeting. This is council input and discussion regarding budget consideration for the fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget and beyond. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Pearson for all of the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council, for your extra time here on a Saturday morning. Indeed, we adopted a budget not too long ago in, in August, September, I'm sorry. And here we are again, looking ahead for the next budget. That's the nature of these things and the cycles. And the purpose of this morning is to give us a running start on that next process and try to get as much feedback and input from the city council as possible towards some larger issues. There's not a lot of, you know, looking at the pennies today. It's looking at the vision and trying to see strategically where the council would like to see priorities and investments going forward. So this is an important time, and I will mention that there's been several discussions and looking forward to doing more of these in different kinds of formats, very focused. On Monday night, maybe we'll tease that out a little bit, but there may be some additional CIP updates and some other opportunities for council to do some goal setting. So this morning, I'll be introducing the items and asking for counsel's feedback. I did share some, perhaps some priming questions or just recaps of the different tabs. I do want to thank all the tremendous city staff yet once again. Over the holidays, a lot of writing was being done. In January, we did some editing. We have more topics in this binder for you, just indicative of the amount of volume of work that's going on. And appreciate council's time and review and all that and giving us some feedback on that this morning. So just by way of context, the binder, we've got some list of the white papers in your books. We've got some summary sheets, and there's an overview on tab one. Tab two through six are the white papers organized by strategic priority. Seven is staffing considerations. Eight is prior year updates. We try to be true and go back and see how we did on those and any major updates to that. And then I'll note that all of this material is available on the city's website. We've got a separate page hub for how we are building the future webpage. So with that, I believe when I ask first, Joshua Lee is going to talk on your agenda. We want to ask you for feedback and talk a little bit about strategic priorities. This is always a work in progress, but particularly now have some different perspectives. And Joshua's going to give us a little preview of that to maybe get some feedback on that, too. Joshua?
Thank you, Mr. Pearson, Council and Mayor. Thank you for taking the time this morning and, you know, this opportunity specifically with our strategic priorities. We haven't talked a lot about this, but we've been working diligently in the background to, to, to work on some content. And we thought, what a better time to present you with, with sort of some ideas that we have than at our budget input session and hopefully set the mindset and the direction moving forward. So as you all know, with the high-performing organization, work that we've been doing, the work on, on the core values and the executive leadership team with mission, vision, leadership philosophy, things like that. There's been a lot of development, a lot of growth, a lot of optimization. And so we wanted to take a look at the priorities as well because they all tie in together and they all build sort of the foundation that we sort of stand on here. So, you know, as you know, we do have a set of priorities that are up on our website. You know, we have sustainable infrastructure, fiscally responsible government, healthy local economy, engaged community, safe community, and quality parks, recreation and events. These were great priorities. They're, you know, a good focal point for us. They sort of help the ship sit in the right direction and then we can move it along with, with the different initiatives and things like that. When we set out, it wasn't to, you know, completely destroy these priorities or start from the ground up, but rather we wanted to take an honest look at, at what we were saying here and see if it still represented who we are as a government, what we do for the community, and make sure that was in line with all of the other work that was being done, as well as in the HPO, the High Performance Model. So we got a group together and selfishly speaking, I just wanted to make something pretty and cool. So this is an opportunity to, to work with some colors and things like that. So what we did in redesigning this or reimagining this, this information, we got a group together, an interesting cross-section of employees from across the city, people from all different levels within the organization, all different departments. So we had representatives from IT and fire and police and parks, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, a number of different cross-sections so that we could have this micro business of input and feedback and perspectives. We started with our current priorities and, and really just conversations, sort of workshops around, you know, what do they mean to us? They're, they're just words on a page, but they should stand for something. And, you know, where do we stand within those and are they still accurate? And, and, you know, what do they emote when you, when you hear those words? We looked at, also, we performed an audit on other organizations, other places that we aspire to be or not be, right? So, you know, are these priorities things that live forever or should they evolve over time? You know, we, we asked a bunch of questions. And then we asked those questions in terms of the, the connection point that we have with the community, right? So where we hit that intersection, what makes the most sense to us? And then we organized all of those thoughts and compared to what we had in the past and developed our new priorities. So I'm going to present to you now the direction that we're, we'd like to go, get your feedback, obviously. And you'll see a lot of overlap with, with what we've done, but I think the tone of voice is, is, is changing a little bit. So without further ado, so where we're going. So you've seen our core values, so innovation, ownership, teamwork, integrity, respect, trust. These are our new set of core values. And this was sort of central to our focal point with the strategic priorities because you can't separate those two things. If the strategic priorities are what we provide to the community, then our core values are how we provide them, right? So in everything that we do and providing a safe community, we do it with trust and respect. You know, in quality events or sound infrastructure, we have to do it standing on these pillars of our core values. Otherwise, it just rings hollow. And so we started with exceptional government. So this is a slight deviation from, from what we've had in the past. And then the definition is more dramatically different. So this is our commitment to transparency, accountability, and continual improvement. We will strive to be a model for other cities and aim to evoke pride from residents, visitors, and city employees alike. You'll see these definitions are a little shorter, a little more to the point, but they've been developed by that cross-section of a team so that hopefully, you know, they pull emotion from the people that we work with and the people that we serve. The next, we kind of updated our engaged community. So we're calling this connected community. So at our best, we're at the intersection of government and community with a continuous feedback loop of information that deepens the relationship. In this day and age, you know, everybody's connected. When we talk about being connected, we mean, you know, on a deeper level, on a personal level there, but it does play into that leveraging technology and things like that. Sound infrastructure. So this is the literal foundation that makes Pearland the community, the Pearland community a possibility. Long-term strategies focused on essential services, transportation, clean water, flood mitigation, et cetera, that keep Pearland competitive. Safe community. This is one that we, you know, as we looked at, we obviously wouldn't change. We did update our definition to it, but, you know, one of the, the things that we see in our community survey that's important and that we, that we're proud of and build on every, every couple of years. But we strive to create peace of mind for residents and visitors alike and to deliver on the promise that Pearland is a safe place for everyone. And then finally, strong economy. So stable and steady growth that creates the unending opportunity to invest in building an attractive community that will thrive for generations to come. And so you'll see here, you know, they're sort of stacked longest word to shortest word. And the reason is because at the center of all of this, they're still just words. But the Pearland community is the, the why we do all of this. So we'll have this branding, you know, included on, on all of our different elements and we'll start to update content. Not that it'll replace any of our logos or anything like that, but we're building this as sort of a stamp to remind us every day why we do what we do. One thing you won't, you haven't seen in here that we are, again, working on in the background and we'll share more later on, objectives and key results that can be tied to these priorities. So converting these from just words to measurable actions. So we're testing some things out on the backend right now, which is why I haven't included any more information on that. But in the future, the idea will be, will have elements that you can touch and see and feel that go along with these sort of feel-good words. So that's the new strategic priorities.
Looking for feedback now? Go back to the screen. There you go. All right. Just as a graphic, I like the graphic. I, I think I like the integration with innovation, ownership, teamwork, integrity, respect, and trust there along with the other core values that we've got. Just wondering what it would look like on this pre-pear if the last half of that word actually spelled the word pear?
So, yeah, so we've had in-depth conversations about that. So we do have some iterations where it's P-E-A-R, and that's fun. We have to be very intentional about it. The, the other one that I had that I took out, and I'm almost embarrassed to admit this now, but I played with Pearland to the core because, you know, pairs have cores. And my team almost revolted. So the, we, we can do that when we're, when we're very intentional, but we also don't want people to think that we can't spell, so.
No, and I get that. That's the, that's the trade-off, right?
Yep. Yeah. So we do have some, there are some iterations. If you look at the work that the Economic Development Corporation has done, they do have some treatments that have it that way. It just has to be very on the nose. You know, we have to point out that we're...
On the, on the P, the background picture, do you have different variations of that for different seasons, different months, different events, to highlight things?
Yes, sir. So that, that was one of the, the core considerations. We want to be able to rotate that out. You know, obviously, we have quite a bit of real estate there to work with. The other thing that you'll see over time is the evolution of how we use that pear and use the colors, but also the animations that go along with it. So, you know, the, the P itself, it actually started with the original City of Pearland logo and it evolved into this. So, you know, in a way, it's sort of a full circle, going back to our roots of sorts. But we, we built it with all of these individual components and elements so that we'd have maximum flexibility. And, you know, just like our last strategic priorities, it can evolve over time. I was hopeful to build something that, that we could build onto, right? So that the priorities themselves can evolve, change, but we continue to build on the shape. And then with the objectives and key results that we're testing right now, really those can be plugged and unplugged, you know, as necessary. They can have timelines and event horizons and things like that, and then these can, can persist. So, you know, the, the, my long-term vision is that this is recognizable not just to employees, but to everybody in the community. And this is the central connection point of our charge, our mission. We also, so along with our mission, vision, leadership philosophy, we have some treatments that incorporate that as well. So we're picking up on those shapes. So they'll, they'll have an intersection there between our core values and our strategic priorities because, you know, the, the trifecta of those things builds the DNA of the local government, right? And again, it's with the community at the, at the center and at the focus. So, so that's the idea. The beauty is that I think that there's, there's no limit to what we can do from a creative perspective.
And the other thing I do like is obviously you can build a campaign around this that if we don't tell our story as a city and as an organization, others will, will assume or put what they believe or what they think on us. So I think we have to be, I think we have to be intentional with, with telling our story, telling, you know, who the organization is, what we stand for, the core values that we stand for. Clearly, everything that we do, the services that we render and everything else have to go back, you know, to these core values and, and an outgrowth from the core values. So I think it's a good start to do that. It'll be interesting to see how, you know, it could evolve from here. Councilmember Kamkar, I believe, had a quick comment or question.
It's actually really interesting. As a development professional, we're always selling just a couple of the items in terms of how you're marketing this. I would use the part to the right, prepare to love it. And I would find interchangeable words for business, prepare to grow, for family, prepare to be home. You know, I think there's a couple of different treatments that you can do, building off the prepare with the P, and then using some vertical elements. If we're doing infrastructure, having pictures that are big columns of something interesting or a business, I think that was, those will be helpful with however you want to apply this, whether it's public safety, economic development, or just explaining what we do. Only other comment is I would interchange the connected community and the sound infrastructure inverse those. But those are just my comments.
Thank you, Councilmember. Yes, and that's an interesting thought for sure on the interchanging last word. So fortunately, we have been doing that in some situations. So on the third floor in the HR department, there's actually on the wall this exact same treatment without the P, obviously, that says, prepare to make a difference. And so we are doing that in the number... And so we are doing that in a number of situations. So I'm glad you're, you're thinking in that direction. And, and definitely, you know, there, the, the images in the back, we've got a lot of opportunity. As we're, as we're collecting shots throughout the community, that's, we're, we're keeping this vertical framework in mind for sure.
Councilmembers?
Mayor, if I could just, I'm glad you touched on elements being interchangeable and whatnot. Because when we go to our workshop, Mayor, I just wanted to make sure that one element or at least, you know, one, hopefully, you know, all of these we can agree upon as a, as a council as well on our workshopping. And if we come up with anything else, just to be sure that we can have, I know ownership is in here and I want the council as a body to also have real ownership in this and use this to guide our decisions. So I really like that things are movable and interchangeable. And as our priorities up here reflect the communication that we have with the community, we can give that back to you and build that into this. I think that's really great. So I appreciate your efforts, Josh.
I appreciate what's been done. I don't have a lot to add to it. I think y'all put a lot of work into it so far. And the only thing I could say, I think it's a very proper and good beginning to get this out, not only to us, but the other people. It's in the city. Look forward to all of that happening. Thank you.
Thank you. And just cause I'm that guy, I mean, I like to be prepared for meetings. I didn't see any of this ahead of time and I'm, I'm ready to talk about budget. So I don't have any in-depth thoughts on it, but it looks good from the surface, but any constructive feedback, I mean, we've had have 30 minutes of looking at it so far. So overall, it looks really good. But, but yeah, I'm ready to talk about budget.
Yeah, appreciate, appreciate the changes here. Think that these headings are more actionable and not just kind of summaries of what city services are. So appreciate that. One thing I would just suggest or maybe ask, I don't want to spend too much time on it, but just the, the difference in the, the words seem to fade out, you know, like it's darker for exceptional and then gets lighter to economy. Like exceptional is the most important and strong economy is the least. Innovation's the most important. Trust is the least. I don't think that's the intention, but
Sure.
But that's just kind of like a value system that it seems to introduce.
Yep, that's a good thought and we'll, we'll look at that in future treatments. We tried a multicolored pattern and it got too busy too quick. So we'll, we'll, we'll play with that. Thank you.
All right, we ready to move. Councilmember Perez?
I just echo what, what member Carbone said. I'd love to talk about this in more detail, but better prepared and maybe in a, in a meeting that's not focused on budget.
All right, we ready to move forward. And obviously this, you know, these are the core values, which, you know, exceptional government, connected community, all the way down that then ultimately are into the budget. So it is related to the budget as a, from that standpoint. So I guess with that, are we ready to move forward? Is this something that ultimately, I mean, it's a change, it's a little bit of a change in strategy? Is this something you're looking in a meeting coming up that we would formally adopt or how, what, what's the next mechanism on that?
So the previous priorities weren't a formal adoption. It was, they were just sort of put together and, and positioned on the site. So we can, if you'd like to, to go in more depth, if you're comfortable with them the way they are, I, I think we can move forward with them as is. And then they can evolve over time. So I don't think we need a formal adoption unless you choose so.
I think we're good. So with that, Clay, I guess we move on into the rest of our budget discussion.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Josh.
So the first group is under tab one. We'd like to start out with these overview materials and ask Mr. Roche to guide us through that tab one material, please.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Eric Roche. I'm the budget officer. So under tab one, and Clay, did we want to go over these overview materials? I've been told we were doing tab five first.
I was going with the agenda. So let's, let's do the one, just the OKRs and so forth. So.
Okay. So first we have a white paper going over the current and future budget practices. It generally covers sort of a brief history of the budget office, some changes we've made to become more flexible and agile over the last several years, many led by Mr. McCarter. It also gets into discussing OKRs a little bit, which is later touched on at his larger paper and how OKRs can take, OKRs are sort of those tactical level, what is staff doing to achieve those higher level priorities that city council is setting out? We've certainly heard many council members over the past year remark that they want to have more impact on sort of the strategic direction of the cities. City, OKRs are our way of saying, okay, here's that actual methodology of how we're going to turn those plans into action. It's going to take a little bit of time to implement. And, you know, Josh and what he was talking about, you know, those higher level plans need work too. But those OKRs are kind of on the staff side of things. The paper also discusses something that council had requested, which is more information about activity-based budgeting. Looking at the pros and cons of it in general, it's, it gives you a ton of information about a program's true cost of production in terms of budget, but it also comes with a lot of cost associated with time and staff effort to generate that information and keep it fresh. Moving along to these, sorry, Clay, did we want to get feedback on each paper as we go, or would you want me to review each tab first?
Go, go through those. There's not that many. So just give the overview and then we'll get the feedback on all that together.
Yep. Moving on to the next paper, Strategic Plan Management. This is a beefier paper. I'm sorry. So I stuck an executive summary at the beginning. This covers OKRs, objectives and key results, which I talked about just a second ago, right? Objectives are what we are trying to do. Key results are how we are doing them. One of the things I really like about this methodology is it's very lightweight. It won't require a ton of staff time. It's easy to understand and it's driven by data. It should be very easy to communicate. And the vision is that eventually across the city, all departments and divisions will be able to hand you sort of one page as a council member saying, here's what we're working on. And you'll be able to see those citywide priorities that you are setting as elected officials reflected in those OKRs. You know, alignment will occur sort of naturally. It's a little bit of a messy process that the paper gets into. But there's, there's a lot of benefits to this system. It's not necessarily a super new system. It's been around since the 1960s. But I, I think for this organization, it's the right move because it fits sort of the innovative and innovative culture we have. This is not a super hierarchical workplace. People work across silos here and I believe it'll work well and help us be much more strategic in what we are investing in and working on and accomplishing our priorities. The next, next and last paper in this section is about the data initiative. This is not the most exciting thing. It's kind of a backend establishment of a formal data governance committee made of staff members. This is sort of laying a necessary foundation so that our IT and our analytics groups and our GIS groups and, you know, our, our super users across departments are working together and laying that foundation, whether it be hardware, software, skills, culture, and again, kind of putting a strategic direction behind it so that eventually our staff has the data they need as easy as possible to generate question, answers to council's questions, the public's questions as quickly and accurately as possible. So this is sort of the pre-work, talking about the pre-work of what this group will do. And then this group will create sort of a roadmap that'll start to lead to some of those more interesting data achievements and analytical capabilities. Thank you.
So Mayor, council, those three are, along with the strategic priorities foundational and they really do go together, build upon each other and support each other. So it is new and would welcome any feedback or questions at this point that we can follow up on. Thank you.
Any comments?
Thanks, Mayor. I guess first of all, on the OKRs, I mean, I understand the, well, overall, I appreciate all the work. It's a dense paper and I took a lot of, a lot of staff time to prepare. I appreciate it all. I like the OKRs, there's a comment in there about you, you shouldn't or can't tie, you know, the merit pay or paper for performance. I get that, but I hate that at the same time. I guess, do you have any? Any, any way to, to, to navigate through that?
Yeah. So I, I knew council, based off previous discussions, might have sort of that reaction that it's, it's not necessarily what you wanted to hear. All the material I read and I, I looked through ways to make it work has kind of pushed back on that idea because it leads to staff kind of sandbagging on their goals that they're setting. And we're trying to really push staff to achieve more. So I, I think we need to have further discussions with this, you know, around a merit pay system, which I think we'll be talking about later. I think HR has been talking about that. I think it's absolutely acceptable under, you know, whatever system you, you want to use to, if I was going into my employee review, I would bring my objectives and key results, you know, whatever my personal ones are to show what great work I've been doing, right? Cause it, that should be what you're focused on. That's the whole point. But how you sort of separate those out so that you have the right incentives, so that staff's incentives align with what's best for residents and not what's necessarily only best for that personal staff member and any sort of merit raise that's linked to them is sort of really tricky and important. And unfortunately, I don't have an answer right now, but I, I think we understand the incentives at play and how staff will respond to those incentives.
And then on the, the data initiative or the DGT, that, that all, I mean, it makes sense. Is there any specific cost metrics? Or is this more of a, a restructure of how staff's doing things behind the scenes?
It's a, it's a little bit of a formalization of things that are already happening and creating a space for staff to be able to bring their problems to so that they can be, be solved in a more strategic way and making sure that we're not setting a system up of what our coders call, you know, duct tape or spaghetti that, you know, 10 years from now would be extremely hard to maintain. So we're seeking to avoid that. As far as metrics go, I think we've been discussing a survey of staff around their kind of data skillset and how they see the data culture in the city and doing that sooner rather than later, so that we can come back and start to hopefully show progress on some of those questions and metrics and show that staff are seeing changes. I think also from a council point of view, hopefully you're seeing the changes in communications that come your way so that memos and things like that are having more, more and better data put into them kind of on a continual basis.
Thank you. And I guess the final thing is I, on the, the, the team for the DGT, I appreciate having an attorney on there to make sure that we get this transparency around the open meetings and anything we can do on the front end to be able to respond to public information requests quicker and more accurately would be great. Cause I mean, that, that's kind of at our foundation is that transparency piece.
I agree. In my former role, I ran an open data program, so it's near and dear to my heart as well.
Great. Thank you. That's all I had.
Any other comments?
Yeah, you know, all these acronyms look good on paper and sound good. The ABC, the OKR, the DGT. I guess my concern is, is the cost associated with implementing all of these programs. And the teams that you're putting together to implement them, how much time is it going to take away from their normal job duties? So I'd be interested in seeing going forward what the cost associated with these.
Yes, sir. As far as cost associated, one of my firm beliefs is that we sort of pilot the OKR projects before we launch it citywide. So we can learn and have staff push back on, hey, this is taking up way too much of my time. This is not sustainable. Do you want me to do or do you want me to measure? And incorporate staff's feedback, because this needs to be a system that works for staff. It can't be a system that, you know, the budget office is pushing or the city manager office is pushing. It has to be something that everyone buys into. So the pilot project will accomplish that for OKRs and we'll do the training in-house. So it's more of staff time, not necessarily outside costs. As far as the DGT is concerned, it's not envisioned to, sorry, the data governance team. And I apologize about all the acronyms. The data governance group is, you know, a lot of these conversations are happening already anyway, and it's more of a formalization. And so it, it might affect calendars a little bit, but I don't envision it being a huge amount of staff time. Eventually, there might be some software needs that come out of that, but sort of the data pipeline stuff usually isn't too expensive.
Yeah. I mean, as far as OKR, I mean, historically, I think putting together a budget, you've always start with objectives and then you grade yourself along the way on how the results are tied to those objectives. So it, it's nice to give it a pretty name. All right. That's all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Perez, I think had a comment or question.
Thank you, Mayor. I think this is a good idea. You know, having a military background, you know, the acronyms help facilitate conversation. Once you get used to them, it's, it's not a huge deal, but they can be confusing. So, you know, we need to make sure that that's part of our overall communication. I think in broad strokes, what we're trying to do here, regardless of the, the acronyms we're using is what, what is our, what is our focus on our goal and what, how we, has everybody bought into it and had an opportunity input? And that's for an organization this size, for any organization of any size, that's what they need. You need to focus on what direction we're going. I think, you know, I, the organization that I, that I run outside of Pearland is much smaller, but we do have some of these strategic goals already built in place. So everybody bought on to where we're going. All the employees know, hey, this is, this is our plan. This is what we're trying to implement. It also gives council a little bit more discipline on, hey, if you're going to ask for these things or if you're going to make this comment, how does that fit into the goals that we have already adopted? I think this feeds really well into our, our council retreat. And I think maybe this is some of the things we need to begin to discuss as part of that retreat. What, you know, what are our goals? I also think that we need to have long-term vision that is agreed upon and, and understood so we know which direction we're going. For instance, you know, what's our 10-year plan, our five-year plan, maybe even our one-year plan for the city as an organization? You know, if our 10-year plan is we want to reach a metric of being, you know, something I brought up and we'll discuss later, we want to have no greater than 50% of our general fund, or I'm sorry, our tax rate pushed towards paying off debt. Well, that's a, that's a long-term plan, but how do we get there? And each year when we do these budgets, how do we make sure that we're focused in that direction? That gives staff some clear understanding of what are we pushing towards. It also gives council as we rotate. Each generation of councils only six years long. If we have a 10-year plan and we can go to that new generation of council and say, hey, this is what we were doing before. This is what we're kind of bought into. If you want to do something different, that's fine, but we're changing our direction and understand what those implementations are. So I don't want to rush to do this. I mean, this is the first time we've, we've discussed it in kind of an organized fashion, even though we've had these discussions, as provocative in terms of disorganized fashion for a while. So, you know, let's do this implementation over time. But, you know, I'd love to be able in the next, the next budget session to have some working framework of what are our highest priorities and what's our 10-year plan, what's our five-year plan, what's our one-year plan and have that rotate. We've had success with it with a five-year capital improvement plan. Everybody's bought on. So there's no reason why we can't do that with most of the major systems, if not all of the major systems that we, we operate as a city. But I think this is a great direction.
Councilmember?
That's all I have.
Yeah, I, I agree with a lot of that from member Perez. I, I don't think that this is like a, a nice little side thing that we're doing. I, I think as a board of directors, this is the core of what we're doing. I, I think our goal should be to spend as little time as possible in the weeds and in the details. We, we try to hire staff who are good at their respective details. And, and sometimes we do drill downs into certain things, but ultimately we should be up here at this high level and, and setting the strategic vision that the people who voted for us want in their community. And so I, I, I think there hasn't been an ability for us to do that. And, and an example of that, you know, member Little mentioned the, the budget process and setting those priorities. We have those priorities, but like you said in here, if there isn't complete buy-in to using a system, it will quickly collapse. And I don't think we have buy-in to our values because we, we haven't had this kind of retreat or goal-setting thing since I've been here. I know that's been done before and I'm really excited that we're going to do that again. But my very first budget session, a couple of months into being elected, we, we passed a budget for three, but there were no substantive amendments that were made to, to change that budget. So there was clearly a lot of frustration with the budget that, that got there. But, but there, there wasn't a feeling apparently amongst the council of like how we could change it to the direction that would fit our needs. And so if we could set these values and say, you know, this, this is what we want, this is what's important to the people that we represent, I, I think we would be able to shape our budget and shape our policies. budget and shape our policies in a way that we might not always feel like we can right now because this is a big complicated organization. We come here every other Monday and it, it's kind of hard to, to set the vision and set the priorities. So I think this is a way of formalizing, I fundamentally look at this as, as council, empowering a council to actually be thoughtful about what we want to do and, and put our priorities into policy and not just have a kind of, oh, we have all these planning documents that have been made at various times at various points that nobody really knows everything that's in them or believes in them fully. So I, I think this is a great way to organize that. I agree, don't want to do it too quickly, want to make sure that it truly reflects the will of council and people and the staff and, and what's a priority. But I think the priority setting, in addition to having good data to empower that process is essential. So really, yeah, appreciate the thoughtful white papers. We, we're going to have a lot of work to do on, on this, but I think this is a good start.
Mayor, I had a few comments on this that some will be high-level, some will be not as high-level, but I think a theme that I'm going to bring up quite often throughout today's meeting is just standardization of the way that information is presented to council as well as to the public. I think this is a great step in moving towards some type of standardization of the way that we access and present information. So I wrote, standardize the format even of these memos. Standardization of the memos would have been extremely helpful to go through and know that, hey, I'm about to encounter this type of data now or this type of data. So that's just some initial feedback on this and I hope to see that, that move as we push forward with this group, if that's the will of the council. Also, in addition to that, when I was reading through this, where we talked about the improved transparency through open data and I just kept thinking about where it talked about residents own the data generated by the city, that really made me think a lot about the city secretary's role in this and I did not see that she was part of this or anyone from her department was part of this data governance group. I wanted to ensure that, you know, that discussion, if you can, was that had, that she was part of this?
It's a complete oversight on my part and I think we should add her.
Okay. Yeah, because I think that we were focusing in on the way that we're handling the, the data, I guess, as individual points of information, but the dissemination and presentation of that information, I think, is equally as important and that really stuck out to me. So I appreciate you speaking to that. With the way that I prefaced it, it sounded like I was going to say a lot more, but that's really all the comments I have, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Kamkar?
Budget Officer Roche, you come from a municipality that has done several things on this front. Let's assume a best-case scenario, how long is this going to take to get to something that's actually actionable and that we can use data that maybe we don't have today? Is this a one year, is this five years, is this 10 years?
On the data governance side of things?
Yeah.
I think within a year, you could see impacts where staff are starting to have much more access to data and you're starting to see analysis sort of surfaced more in, in memos. You're going to start hopefully seeing a little bit more detailed GIS analysis, you're going to see a little more sophisticated use of, you know, pivot tables and standard deviations and those sorts of things. Most of the training can be-
You mean Excel then, right?
Excel.
The pivot table or the standard deviation.
A lot of those metrics can be done in Excel and when it comes to teaching staff to code, that's sort of a future thing. There's a handful of staff in a city this size that probably need that skillset and it's kind of about delivering a program that's going to deliver the most value. So to begin with Excel, but, you know, opening up those opportunities to staff who do want to kind of step into sort of that junior data science role and making sure that we have those training materials available is part of my vision.
Understood. When you were in Kansas City, how much money a year do you say, and we're just, we're just ballparking here, do you think this data governance team needed for upgrades, training, et cetera? Are we talking half a million dollars a year, $10,000 a year, a million dollars a year?
I think for training, it was about $25,000 a year for, to bring in some consultants. We did a lot of the training in-house with staff and it resulted in much better training because everything was done with examples of our own data and city data and teaching them how to use open data. When it comes to the hardware and software costs, not a great comparison to the city of Pearland. We, we already had a lot of systems in place that we use there, so I'm, I'm not familiar. That's more of an IT question, unfortunately, so I kind of have to punt on that.
Let me ask you a question then. We probably don't have the equipment needed to probably adequately do everything that is envisioned in this paper. Is that your assessment probably today?
I think there's going to need to be some additions to software, on the software side of things in the future.
Okay. And the reason I'm asking this is all these white papers are phenomenal until you actually have to cut the check and I just want to understand what the outlays that we're going to be doing on this and, and the, from an operation standpoint, I actually want there to probably be a rotation of these people. The reality of the situation is, is our database administrator, our financial analyst and our cyber risk person, I don't want them to be the only people involved in this, whether we create some, we need to create circulation in the pool. So if those people leave the city or if those people die or they decide to move on, that we're not stuck where we have a hole, so to speak. So that would be the only other thing I would, I would add to this in terms of a scope is that there needs to be a rotational system so we can bring people to be more familiar with this.
Yes, sir. Will do.
Good comment. Any other comments? Councilmember?
Yeah, I sit on this process. This is a type budget has been done since the 1960s. I've been doing city budgets since the early 70s and we're going through zero-based management by objectives and what have you, but I've never ran through this one. But it seems to be an open-type budget process and for my party is the cost versus the result. And you've talked a little bit about the, the training and the software that's needed to do this, to put it together. Is this something on the budget? I've also, you know, over the years have said that, you know, people in different departments would come in and say, this is the city manager's budget. And I've also, you know, I've asked that in the past, that the department directors come in and stand up in front of council and say, this is my budget, this is what I need to operate for this, this budget year, the dollars, people or what have you on there. Because if you don't get the director's buy-in, it's never going to pan out to be a, a good program on, on any budget if they're not at the point that they buy in to the budget as it is. But I guess the, the real point from my aspect of it is certainly the cost of what, you know, you go through there and then what results of the improvement over the budget process that we have to date in the past that we've done. And so that's a big concern and of course, the results we need to have as we go into this is, is an end date on that of, that we should start seeing results in a, in a number of months or years or whatever and doing this to be a positive thing for the city. So that's mine, you know, like I say, I go back, it's cost versus results and when can we expect the results to come in that we'll be able to look at and say, okay, this is the best thing that we've done. And so it's, the results are there in a period of time. But in, in yours, and you've been a, as a part of it, what other cities? You said it's being done by other cities since the 60s. Can you give us an identification of what other cities may have and see if, see if they're still using this same type of budget process?
Yes, sir. So a lot of companies have used it since the 1960s, starting with Intel. The, and it's growing rapidly in the private sector still. So naturally, government being a little bit behind the private sector is just now starting to adopt these methods into the public sector. The city of San Jose has been someone we've been talking to as well of this, as well as the city of Syracuse. Going to this methodology of objectives and key results, we would be one of the earlier cities, we'd be one of the leading cities on this, which I, I think is exciting and interesting to staff. Having worked on very top-down and heavy strategic plans that require a ton of staff time and therefore a lot of cost associated with them, I specifically am proposing OKRs because of how lightweight they appear to be over something like a traditional strategic plan or a scorecard system. This, this method really seems designed to solve a lot of those problems and to try and add this level of strategic detail to the organization without overburdening staff, council, et cetera.
Okay. And as a point of that, I think you'll bring it to the council and the council has to have a buy-in to it also. You don't want to get partway into it and then the council says, well, we didn't expect that, we didn't know what the costs were going to be that much. So it's, it's a point that going into it, that we really need to lay it out and say, okay, this is the cost that it does. It's going to be some of the training and, you know, that's necessary in it. So we need to get that full loaf out there and see what the, the results are going to be and, and how long it's going, you know, take us to get into positive results of the, of the program. So that's my only concern.
Yes, sir. We'll, we'll take notes during the pilot project on how long things take and we'll bring those back to council via memo.
And I have a question. Is this thought of as, as only a budget thing or this is kind of, my perspective is that this kind of ties everything we do together, but interested in yours?
It, it's, the objectives and key results are sort of the guiding of everything. They tie everything together and the budget, instead of being sort of an outcome into itself, is an enabling aspect to achieve the objectives and key results. So the budget should reflect those top city-wide objectives and key results and priorities that are being set by city council. It won't happen immediately, but you know, year two should be better than year one and by year three, four, five, you should be able to clearly receive, see that the budget allocations that are being done reflect those OKRs.
Appreciate that. And again, just to sum it all up, I think from my perspective, since I've been here, we've never put together a document that said, these are our values and what's really important to us and go and achieve these and we're going to measure the staff on, on these things. And I think to do that through these OKRs would be, would make it, you could be a much more effective council member and, and we could much more effectively drive the exact results that we're looking for, for the people of Pearland. So I'm looking forward to seeing what comes next here.
Well said. I like the direction of it. Obviously, lots of questions and how we input it and, and those types of things, but good comments, good thoughts, good feedback, hopefully. Do you, do you have good feedback, Eric?
Yes, I believe I, I know what council's concerns are going forward. I know what they like about it and what, again, what their concerns are and we'll, we'll get down and get some early projects going on it and keep council in the loop about how it's going and what those associated staff costs are.
Councilmember Little?
Yeah, just to clarify one thing, Eric, you're going to be doing these on a department-by-department basis, right?
So right now, we're still in learning mode, so we're going to try it with a few divisions and, you know, get our training material sort of ironed out and make sure that, you know, staff doesn't absolutely hate it. I don't anticipate that they will, but really take their feedback into, you know, take their feedback seriously and improve our, the way we're doing this. Then I envision it sort of going to different departments and you'll start to see departments kind of come online one at a, one at a time until we, we get, you know, where we need to go with hopefully all departments involved.
Okay. I, I think that's good. I guess that will be council's way of looking at each department's report card going forward. You're going to sharpen your pencils.
The only other feedback is we, we might need a, a legend on all of the acronyms, you know, before too long. But with that, it's good stuff. I guess we can move forward.
Thank you, council. If you wouldn't mind, I'd suggest let's go to tab five. I think this is another foundational piece that'll allow us to have that with that, and that's the healthy economy. And again, if you allow, there's two papers here and one is the economic outlook. I think we can, you know, kind of, you know, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to entertain those. But that's really a summary of a lot of the materials and documents that we send to the council on a regular basis about our financial base in terms of the sales tax and property tax base, et cetera, and how those are performing. Obviously, there's the COVID specter on top of that. And then we also have the materials from community development that's quite extensive in one of their quarterly reports, again, something else we send to you regularly each quarter. And that shows you the building, new, new construction activity. As you noted, Mayor, we're going to be seeing a slowing in the growth pace, but I mean, there will still be additions and reconstruct, reconstruction, but not so much on the brand-new construction volume. But maybe if the, the second paper is short, but that's where you may want to offer some feedback and that's our newly adopted Pearland Prosperity Strategic Plan. And we've listed some of the items there that are on the top of the list from that plan and things that would have a potential financial impact. And this would be a good place to get some feedback on those strategies and prioritizations from that. So that's tab five. Back over to you.
Council, comments, concerns, questions?
I've got one that, something that kind of stuck out to me on the front of move towards these goals and working economic growth and diversification. I think this should be very clearly tied into efforts to update our UDC and zoning to really go and look strategically at how we can bring in better or even denser valuation cities, start taking some of the burden off the individual taxpayers in the city. I think that that has to be looked at comprehensively, not just from, you know, the EDC going out trying to recruit large employers, but I think across the city as a whole, really taking a look at the way that we approach development and allow development in the city to make it easier for businesses to come here, to bring more value to the, to our, our city and again, take some of that burden off the shoulders of the individual taxpayers and the homeowners. So I didn't really see that tie-in in these and I would kind of like to see a better job at tying those two things because I think the way that we approach development very directly ties into the way that we approach economic development. That's, that's the kind of overarching comment that I have on this, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember?
Yeah, going back on this for the budget process, you know, I, I think having a budget like this and versus, you know, to, to end results on that of, of the process, I think, you know, they may, that may help us, we've talked about several times, of establishing goals for people. And I think on, on this type thing, when we put the budget in and looking for results, that would be an opportunity to come in and use that results in a timeframe for it to be a goal, city council goal, to achieve that within this period of time. And so that's what I like about this on, on the results, on the budget process, it will help us establish goals. And I think it's something that we need to do and have to do, starting this period now.
Yep. Councilmember?
On the Pearland Prosperity, I guess on 2.0, where it talks about the business formation and the entrepreneurship, I like the final paragraph where it clearly says we might, we're, we're probably not going to establish a physical presence or a physical hub, but EDC will backstop some sort of entrepreneurship program. So I appreciate that. I like that direction and look forward to seeing that plan. On 3.0 site development, it mentions the plan recommends that EDC acquire and prepare shovel-ready sites. I don't know that the EDC or any part of government wants to be in the development business. I, I don't, I just want to be on the record, I don't think we should go out and acquire property to develop it. That's not our job as government. And then on corridors, y'all know my thoughts on that. I did see that we lost a P and an E off of a sign at 35 and 518. It's a fairly new sign, hopefully for what we paid, we got some warranty work or something, but it's, it's already missing. That's it.
I'll, I want to echo some of that, councilmember, especially on site development. But I think if, if EDC has a role and wants to be strategic in doing a, a business park or something of that nature, which a lot of municipalities across the state do, and I agree, I don't think they need to be the developer. I think they can help in, in directing and getting development to come in. I think there's a, I think there's a strategic way you can do that without being the actual developer. developer. And and so I think that's one of the things that we need to look at. I've given Matt some thoughts on some areas that he's interested in doing that. The city may be able to assist in in attracting and and, you know, looking for the right developers that we can we can work with to do that, but we don't need to be the actual developer. We don't need to be taking the risk and tying up dollars in land and and those types of things. I agree with that.
Do we have Matt on? Just wondering.
He should be available, so I've tuned him in. Fill up airspace with other questions while we're getting.
I I just wanted to ask, Mayor, just kind of to what extent, when we're talking about site development, we're talking about what was done with the Lower Kirby District and and to what extent this is proposing something different? Because I, as we all know, in terms of Lower Kirby, I I think that's been a tremendous success story where you went from having, what was it, Matt? Maybe it's half a million dollars of taxable value out there to over a billion dollars in in the Lower Kirby District. So and I know there was kind of some difficult things there in terms of all these very tiny parcels and how does it, how do you consolidate them and and get this tremendous value that we have there now? So I I just kind of wanted some more context there, Matt, if you could provide that.
Yeah, happy to. You know, so it it recognizes obviously in Lower Kirby that, you know, we have played a big role in the Lower Kirby. We are the de facto developer. We've, you know, financed the infrastructure there. You know, we've built a building, bought land, sold land. So, you know, in the in the Lower Kirby District, we are the developer. Obviously, as we get west of of Kirby, it just acknowledges that there's a lot smaller tracks. And I think we're eventually going to, you know, hit a wall as the available land gets absorbed, that we're going to have to partner with developers and work with developers, look at how we can assemble some of the properties to to get them developed, to keep the momentum going. And then, you know, the same different dynamic on State Highway 35, you know, the corporations optioned property before, the city's been in the chain of title before. If you look at Kem Lawn or Multi Alloy, some of our bigger projects, you know, the city's been active in those in those areas. So, you know, just look at that. I don't want to be a developer. I don't, most cities don't want to be developers. Most corporations, as the mayor said, I think if you look around, whether it be Sugar Land, Conroe, or many of the communities in our region, all their corporations play this role.
No, I appreciate that and have been grateful for for PDC's efforts and and want to make sure that that and of course, that it's a continuous process with council, but that PDC is empowered to have the tools it needs because really, and and I want to zoom out on this Pearland Prosperity Plan, and I've said this before, we have three levers as as a city for for what we can do. I mean, we we in terms of our budget, we have the assessed value of the City of Pearland that we can apply taxes to. So we have the value of Pearland and then we have our spending and then we have our tax rate. Those are those are really the only three things that we have. So we can adjust the the tax rates and fees. We can adjust how much we're spending and we can do our best at the margins to impact that how valuable Pearland is. And that's really all there is. And nobody up here wants to raise taxes. So that's not in terms of getting more getting more resources. We we don't want to raise taxes. We don't want to cut a a lot of the stuff we have. Over two thirds of of our budget goes to public safety. We we see a lot of priorities that that are important with emergency management, other things that that need to be funded. So there's probably some things we can cut, but we haven't had success finding that many so far. So I think the most painless way to increase our resources and fund the priorities we want is to try to increase the value of Pearland. And I I think that's what a a large part of PDC's mandate is. And I think that's a large part of what this prosperity plan, which was, you know, something that I participated in with Member Little and with Member Perez and and business leaders, educational leaders, community leaders throughout the city over the last year and a half. I I I think this is critical and it's the it's the it it makes it easier to get some of this done without having to have the hard decisions of, are we going to raise people's taxes or are we going to cut essential services that they need? And so I think this is really an area where we should say, let's go pedal to the metal and and try to increase the value of Pearland. And there's the seven, seven action items, but it really goes back to two things, which is, one, economic growth and diversification, and two, being a community of choice in greater Houston. And those are really linked. It really goes to this, people who are productive and involved in their communities and who spend a lot of money and and who build build businesses that that are valuable, they like to live in nice places. They like to live in nice communities that have nice amenities and that are appealing and that are connected and that are close. And so in making Pearland better and and more appealing and more fun, we we also in increase the economic output, we increase the people who are economically productive, who want to be here. And so I I think that's a this this plan lays out a good framework for what, how how we think about a lot of decisions of how do we make Pearland desirable in a way that people want to move here and businesses want to move here and we want to keep growing. So I I I think this is important and and I also think it's important to focus on the increasing value side so we we can not spend as much time on the the tax side.
Yeah, I I think those are good, good comments. And I think it goes back to, let's look at Lower Kirby. You know, at the end of the day, the the city became the de facto developer simply because we put in Kirby, all of the water sewer, you know, those types of infrastructure. And then the economy bottomed out when that was all done. So we we kind of be, we we kind of, we did become the de facto developer. We didn't own the land, except for the one place that we put the CSI. And we did that to prime the pump, if you will, to get something in that area to show that it was a viable market to to get going. And and I think from that standpoint, if there's other areas, 35 and 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 north and 35 south, I think there's some areas where we can play that same card. We just don't, we just need to be careful where and how much that that we get into it. At this, at the end of the day, building McCord Road, we're, you know, we're developing that, we're building that, and that's going to open up a corridor to, you know, more economic development, more rooftops, more taxable value, more of everything up and down that corridor. So we we are doing that off, obviously to increase mobility, but the byproduct of that is it should be, should be an increase in taxable value. At the same time, I I I don't think we need to be an owner of a business park, if you will, but I think there's ways that we can do this site development, partnering with the right development or developers around the the area in doing it the right way and incentivize developers to come in in certain ways to, working through our our UDC, working through some of those things that that get clogged up in the in the entitlement process and still have that community of choice. I think we can do all of those. We just have to be mindful of it. So I think it 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 and it certainly is a site development, this part of the of the Pearland Prosperity, I think to me, is one of the most important things that that they should be doing. This is, this is core economic development stuff right here.
Mayor, if I could just to add one more thing to what I said, and I appreciate your comments on supporting that move to update the UDC, but also to direct staff to maybe go out and and I'm sure we have some of this stat already, but to continually stay on top of identifying the types of developments that bring us the most value per inch of dirt in this city, I think it's crucial so that we can go and strategic strategically plan around that, make the changes to UDC, make it easier, incentivize development in those key strategic areas to bring in the absolute most value where we can. And if that's in, you know, more mixed development sites, you know, we should make those moves. If it's not, then we shouldn't. And I just don't have a a super, I guess, clear understanding of the ongoing efforts that we make and that it kind of seems like it comes before, and it, you know, we look at it for a little bit and we don't really, so we got to be really aggressive and continue to drive that when we are continually running out of places to develop. We got to look at things that we can potentially redevelop or the stuff that we do have remaining that's really hone in on the absolute maximum value that we can bring to the city. Because to Member Orlando's point, it goes back to, he mentioned, you know, public safety making up, I did the calculation, I think it was 84% of all of our ad verorum and fines and forfeitures goes to public safety, which is a a huge number. So we have to start chipping away at that, take that pressure off the backs, like I said, of the the homeowners and 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 make it so that they can have a little bit of breathing room. Because he's right, none of us up here, I think, want to raise taxes and, you know, it's just we're running out of options. And if we don't focus on where to bring in maximum revenue, there's not really much else we can do. So that's all we got. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Perez online had a comment or question?
Thank you, Mayor. I I will, I won't go into dive into too much detail. Primarily, I'm on the committee for Pearland Prosperity. I think we'll have plenty of opportunity as we, as that that program gets presented and amended to council to talk about long term strategies. I don't think it's those long term strategies, what we're going to do over the next five, 10, 20 years as a city is really the focus of of this meeting. But it's good to at least tie it into what we're what we want to do this year for the budget. I don't, I I would just say, I I agree that the Pearland should not be a developer. I struggle to disagree with Member Orlando's point about Kirby being a successful development. From a development perspective, it's it wasn't successful. It's been in place for 20 years and we still have a lot of empty lots. If you were a developer, you would have lost a lot of money doing that. And that's why the city shouldn't play a role in development. What we should do is play a role in facilitating public private partnerships where we get with developers and say, hey, where where is it you would like to be? What are your challenges and what, where are the edges that we can nip off? If it's land cost, then maybe we can do land acquisition. If it's entitlement issues, maybe we can do a deal, help you deal with entitlement issues as long as there is a, we can focus on a public need. And I think budgetarily, you know, that's what we need to get EDC, that's where we, the direction we want to give to EDC is how do we develop those relationships? Then how do we have a process, a well-funded process to send out RF, RFQs to development agents that can help us with the areas of town that we want to redevelop? I think for this year, budgetarily, tying into what we want to do in the PPP plan, particularly on the entrepreneurial side, is I want us to focus heavily on trying to get us into a hub zone, the historically underutilized business SBA hub zone. If you look at the hub map, there's a kind of a big gap on the south side of Houston where we do not have a hub zone and those, that hub certification could do a lot to help small businesses in Pearland to be more effective. If we get a hub zone and be more aggressive about federal contracts, state contracts, other governmental contracts from other municipalities, and if we can be that a a hub zone and we can focus a lot of our attention this year on developing that hub zone, we can not only help steward entrepreneurship or small businesses to want to come here, we can also keep our their employees here because the hub zone requires your, not just your office be here, but your employees be here, at least, I think, 30, at least a third of your employees have to live in the hub zone or in a hub zone. So for this year, budgetarily, I'd really like to get, have Matt and and his team focus on what we can do to get us, to get us in that hub zone. I'm not sure how long that process is, but I really would like that to be a principal focus to this budget year.
Council, comments?
Just want to add one quick thing. I'm I'm pretty excited about McCord getting started. Drove by the other day and making some pretty good progress. I I think this is an excellent opportunity for the EDC to push commercial and industrial development, but my concern is that it's going to be like most of the rest of Pearland will end up being large residential communities, which, as we know, are sometimes tax negative or it takes years for them to even get tax neutral. So I hope that EDC can push some more commercial and that and industrial development along that corridor. I know that's not the purpose of this meeting, but I wanted to throw that out there. Thank you.
Councilmember Cam Carr?
Yeah, thanks, sir. I I think this Pearland Prosperity Plan is interesting. I I got the chance to meet Mr. Buchanan actually earlier this week and we touched on a couple of the topics. I I would like to see prior to more support given, a more detailed three to five year plan. Obviously, we address certain corridors, we we kind of show different items we want to do, and I would kind of like a prior organization going with the OKR theme, being able to identify what are the metrics. You know, to Member Carbone's point, as a greedy scum sucking developer, professionally speaking, development is not fun. It's hard. There's things that pop up, but we do have a lot of blighted properties here in the city and there's not more land we can add into the city very easily and we kind of have what we have. And I think considering what the hand that's been dealt, major highway, tech stop roads everywhere, don't forget the train, that is an active train. Those are not easy things to work around. Those are things that cannot be moved. And so some of these areas on the east side around 35, you know, they might have environmental issues or you're just next to a very undesirable train. And so only certain users want to be next to that and we have to be very cognizant of that and where we can go and clean up a site and get it quote unquote shovel ready, we have to realize what we have is what we have. To the subject and the meat here, I've noticed quality of life is not addressed as a key item. That might be something I would do, add some commentary on. One of those items is a 51% rule. There's a reason why people can't go have a drink, very limited options here in our city and we're losing out sales tax to other major municipalities. And to the point that Member Hernandez made about the big shoulders, the reality of the situation is Enders Hauser, Alonzo can stomach a five or six digit tax bill. The alternative is taxing mom or dad. And if you go pull up our CIP, I believe our CIP now is north of $600 million, so more than a quarter, half a billion, somebody's got to pay for that. And businesses can help more so than mom and dad can. So we need to be cognizant of what we're doing to attract those folks. And I think cleaning up sites and putting taxable value beyond ag or beyond, you know, Open Prairie is going to be helpful to that end for the the city that we want to build in 2020, 2030, 2040. And the only other thing I would say is, is we need to really address, and it's not spelled out here, how is the city looked at? I would tell you from people in my industry, the City of Pearland is not a place to do business. The there's onerous regulation, there's inconsistent guidance, and we need to figure out what do we want to be and how easy do we want to be to work with? People do have choices and they vote with their feet. So I I I hear the comments. I think the plan is good. I do not mind the city taking on a role as a developer to do certain things. Picking winners and losers is not what they should do, but I I do think some of these items where we do need to fix up stuff, I think that moves the needle towards a positive for the City of Pearland.
Anyone else? I think we're good to move on.
Um, if it could, Mayor, though, you know, when we, the prosperity plan was developed, you know, by the the committee members and so forth, that site development, I think we, everybody knew was, you know, had different perspectives on that and what that meant. Frankly, there was a tour that the PDC board themselves did and I think that energized them about some of potentials when Matt walked through that. And I think we wanted to do that, that's that's got an interrupter of last year with the council and I think that would provide some value. But I do think it strikes me that there's a continuum of developer, not a developer. I mean, there's everything from owning, buying, you know, à la CSI, and then there's land assembly, you know, prepping, plating, you know, and then goes on from there. And I think we do need to get some clarity about that because nobody wants to do a bunch of work and then I don't, we have to do that now, but we, I think we do need to get some better agreement about where on the continuum you want to be. If it's on one end or the other, that's so be it, but I think that would help all of us.
And and let me get real quick, just with the council, some thoughts on that and and Councilmember Cam Carr and I, I think we have, we'll have some agreement on maybe how we can do some of this. For example, 35 corridor, there are some long term plays because of that that corridor. There's a, you go down south from the from the high school south, there's probably, I don't know, 500 to 700 acres of vacant land down there. There's a lot of land. Not saying that we go buy 500 or 700 acres, but I think there's a couple of areas down there, for example, that are strategically located where the city can play a part in assembling those tracks and putting them together. Okay? Don't necessarily have to close and buy that land, but they can assemble it. At the same time, being active, a lot of cities go out and put a call for developers to come in. You do an RFP, RFQ process, developer comes in, they ultimately take it down. We've assembled it, we've 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 put But we've assembled it, we've, we've, we've put the, we've put it together. And then there's other ways that we can make sure that we're getting what we want out of it. And, and so that's a, that would be an active role of site development without necessarily spending, you know, millions and billions of dollars of, of, of buying land and then putting the infrastructure. But then working with those developers to make them as successful as possible through the entitlement process. That's an example of site development that I think could make some sense. But I do agree, I think we, we need to give real good direction. Don't know that today is the day to do that. Might be something that we come back shortly here in the next month or so. And maybe, you know, we, we have a, if we can figure out from a, from an agenda standpoint, how we, we could do it on a Monday night and really give some good, good direction to the EDC on what the council will look at.
Thank you. So if council would mind, let's turn to tab two. And I think these would each, we, we should go through them individually, meaning a short, brief, and then have some council feedback on these. And there's a lot of these. But I'll ask Mr. McCarter to start out with that capital project investment paper. It's on page, tab two, I'm sorry, page three there.
Thanks, Mr. Pearson. So this paper is a repeat. We have this on here annually. So basically, the, the goal of this white paper is to write an overview of how we finance our, our, our capital project, our CIP rather, apologies. Starting out with kind of an overview of our general debt obligations. And you'll notice this is very much geared towards the general fund rather than, both the general fund and enterprise fund, both of which issue, issue debt and have a capital plan. But I think one of the highlights that we look for every year is on page four, the debt to assess value rates over time. This is a little different than you've seen in prior years. We, the green line here, which represents the, the percentage that debt to assess value, the light green line is without the TERS included and the dark green line is with the TERS debt included. If you'll all remember, that TERS debt is structured to be paid off by a TERS reimbursement. So there's a balloon payment coming up in 2029. So although that is debt on our books and absolutely counts towards that debt to AV, we're not paying principal on that annually. So you could look at that as not really included in that overall picture. So important graphic there. Next, we, we outline our, our proposed changes for the upcoming budget cycle and future planning. The first item here that we're looking for feedback on is use of certificates of obligation. Our, our CIP annually takes advantage of COs as, as a financing mechanism for long-term projects. And our, our comprehensive financial management policies guide how we use those certificates of obligation. And on page five there, items A through F, that comes right out of our, our comprehensive management policies. And we wanted any feedback from council on how we could change these to better reflect the will of council. We had the example of the traffic signal improvements that were in the, the CO portion of the CIP that were removed at the intent to reimburse stage. So we want to avoid that in the future and just be more proactive on, on what we're putting in that CIP to make sure we're reflecting the will of council on that. Next, the May 2024 bond referendum. This will be five years after the 2019 bond referendum. So on this item, it's just getting this out here on the radar. We've had this come up during the CIP last year and brought up in a few city council meetings. So just some implications here and looking for any feedback on whether we want to explore this as an option. Not necessarily looking to get a hard and fast list of projects, just putting this on the radar for something to come back to council at a later date. There's a lot of other, of other information in here. The balance of this white paper is more or less repeated from prior years and outlines how we use debt, what the process is to issue that debt and what the safeguards are so we're not misusing that debt. You can see the property tax-supported debt on page nine there, a breakout of the property tax rate. Important to bear in mind that that debt rate does include the mud rebates as well as our own debt obligations that we control here as staff. And those are all done in accordance with those preset mud agreements. And then also really important on page 11, the capital financing process overview. So a lot of times we get far along in the process and, and questions come up about whether or not we should be issuing this debt. And this kind of outlines how those decisions are made. So this is really kind of our first step in that debt issuance process is today. Looking through this white paper here and kind of having a broader discussion about how we want to use debt before we bring the CIP back for you all in June. So I think that provides a nice overview going forward. So that's that, that first white paper. Mr. Pearson, do we want to stop or keep going?
No, let's, any feedback on that from council, please?
Yeah, on, it's page five when we talked about the, the issuance of COs. Overall, in my opinion, that's a little too lax. I, I thought, and maybe staff can help me, didn't we have some, a little bit better guidance that, that restricted the use of COs? I was kind of shocked to read this is how lax it is. And so I, I didn't think, when we pulled out the traffic signals, that, that was throwing staff for a curveball. But if this is what you're going by, then yeah, I, I think, in my opinion, the COs are, are debt that it's not voted upon and we just say, hey, we want to go throw it on a credit card versus taking it to a bond referendum. And with there, there being a potential bond referendum where that'd be 24, 25, 26, whenever that is, it's always, always going to be my opinion to push it out to the voters to get their input, especially when there's so much pushback in terms of our, our debt service to O and M ratio. I, I get real uncomfortable issuing debt that's not voter-approved. I mean, what I do, what I, I do like about those A through F is, is when we do have the opportunity to get matching funds. So if we're, if we've got to come up with 20% to get 80% funded, I'm, I'm fine with COs. And then I think in the past, historically, we've used COs for public safety projects. I guess outside of that, when it's just, hey, there's been an overrun on GO projects and we need some more money, why have budgets and, and, I don't know. That, that seems like our, that the cities issue, if we went out and said, hey, a project on a bond referendum is 10 million and it runs in at 15, I, I hesitate to just say, oh yeah, let's go, let's go stopgap with COs for an additional 5 million.
Could I comment?
Yeah.
Please. So if, if I'm not mistaken, this is, this is the section that's from the adopted financial policies that we see each year. And what you're saying is true in terms of this is the policy that gives that flexibility. But then it's also true what you said, what we've done is exactly that for those types. So again, frankly, if council would like to amend these the next time we see these or whenever, to say for X, Y, and Z types that you decided, which is what we've done, that, that would be clarity. And then there's lack, no surprises when we go and issue it. And then again, that's what we're striving for again and again, is trying to like, you know, the, the policy is X and then we get to a table for the decision and it's like, well, where did that come from? So let's, I would encourage, ask and, but we set those out, the types and put that in there. And then just to your last point, I don't know that we've ever, I, I shouldn't say ever, but I, I don't recall us having to do that quote-unquote "stopgap". But you could probably envision a situation where you had to, but I just, we haven't done that. So that's probably just why it's in there is, you know, what if kind of thing.
I'd certainly be a fan of revisiting this as a future agenda item so we can hash it out. I don't know if we want to get in those details today, if staff wants feedback to that level today or, or we haven't a future.
To me, it's a point taken and I think we're aligned that clarity is better on that. So I could see us bringing that back, just a question of when, so. They conclude your comments? Thank you, Member Carbon. I remember Perez, you are unmuted. Did you have comments?
Yeah, a few. One, I, as rarely that happens, me and Member Carbon are agreeing on a significant item, particularly when it comes to budget. I think we've, he and I have both kind of expressed several times that we want to update the CO policy. I think from my mindset, mine alone, it should be a funding of last resort and a funding for emergency use only. So we discover in a couple of budget years after a bond that our traffic signals are failing and are rates greater than what we anticipated. Or we've discovered that we have a significant project that needs funding and we really don't have, it, it, it doesn't time well for us to wait for the next, the next naturally occurring GO bond referendum, those type of things. You know, we decide as a council, we need a new fire station and we don't want to put that at risk for, to the electorate because it's, it's a priority that we get fire service to a certain, a certain part of town or get the, those type of things, I think, are an appropriate use of a certificate of obligation because it is not voter-approved. You know, I, I think maybe, you know, before we get through this budget cycle, we really need to have that meeting where we're discussing specifically what that, what this new policy is. Because we've been talking about it for a while. And what is in this paper, I know it's the 2011 bond policy. And we haven't, as a consensus, given staff good guidance on when to use it and when not to use it. I think, you know, before the summer, we need to, we need to develop a new policy and implement it so we know what, staff knows what funding mechanisms they can go out and use when it comes to, or what, what they can use COs for and what they can't and not have resistance from, from staff. I think, you know, we'll talk a little bit about the 2024 bond referendum, the projects that we want to do on there, I think, in the agenda. But I think the one thing that I had discussed previously, not just this budget year, but in previous council discussions, is giving us a more intentional and protected path for our, our drainage infrastructure by creating an enterprise fund. I think we recently talked about that. I think we've recently talked about that in the past. And one of the other members brought it up about revisiting it. I'd like to revisit it this year and hopefully maybe we can get something, our initial program into this budget cycle. You know, we, we have an enterprise fund for our water and wastewater. We realize that, hey, this is a, we need to protect the funds so we can constantly improve this system and that, those funds can't be used for anything else. That's why we developed an enterprise fund. We need to do the same thing for drainage so we can be more aggressive about making sure that we're solving drainage problems preemptively as opposed to waiting for something to fail and react to it 20 years later. So, you know, I think we can dust that off and maybe re-present it in this budget cycle and maybe potentially get it adopted this year. I think that would be a good path for us. That's all I have for now. Oh, you know what, you know what, never mind, I'll, I'll say that for later.
Thank you, Member Perez. Member Kamkar, you had your hand up?
Yes, I'm assuming we're going to go to the other items, property tax rate planning, mid-year internal. But I agree with Member Carbon's general assertions. The reality situation between A and F, there's literally not a reason that you could issue a CO. Whether it's an emergency, whether you're getting reimbursing a developer or you're leveraging dollars, there's literally not, the, the barn is literally wide open. There's really not a way that the horse can't escape. We need to tighten that up. And then to the point about the 2024 bond issues, Member Perez is absolutely right. Let me read to you the Drainage Master Plan from 2019 that was adopted. The existing model, page four, last paragraph. The existing modeling results show that most of the major streams within the study area have less than a three-year capacity. Mary's Creek provides approximately five-year capacity and portions of Coward have upwards of 25 to five-year. There are few ditches or major bayou segments have higher capacity, but the majority of the existing channels provide limited conveyance. That's a really, really interesting way of saying we really have inferior drainage and we will be having to work on that for probably the next 20 years. And I would probably start anticipating that we will probably be doing a bond issue every two to three years for the next 20 years, just to catch up. And so when we start planning like that, I think we will be in a better position than where we are today.
They conclude your comments? All right. Member Owens, or Member Little?
Yeah, and not to belabor the issue, but just to, I guess, show that there's a consensus on the COs. I think we need to maybe get that formalized, that policy, and, and I hope to see that on a future agenda item within the next couple of months. So I think we have a consensus on the use of COs.
Thank you, Member Little. Member Owens, did you have comments?
Yeah. Going through this list on some of the COs and stuff, I don't know what the total amount that we've done in COs, say, this past year, but it's probably in the millions of dollars to do that. Emergency, you know, time, you know, on stuff is, is certainly, it's easier to use the COs to do that. Working with some matching for reimbursement for developer, I hope, you know, if we happen to do that, that not only the cost on the COs, but also the interest that we pay on it, the number of years of, you know, of, of the COs is, is also part of that. It just seems like that, I don't know, this past year especially, it's so easy to just go back and get money and do it on a CO. You know, and, you know, looking at how much money is, that is involving. If it's emergency, yeah, there, there's something that we'd have to do on that, be able to do it if we don't have the cash to do it upfront. I don't know how much, you know, total that we've done on COs this past year, but it's, it's a pretty hefty amount. And as a part of that, you know, some of the people, you know, the residents out here says, very easy for y'all to come do it because you don't, you don't have to come to us to ask for money. You just do it on a CO and y'all vote through. And so it seems like sometimes that on the COs, that it's so easy to get it approved through council. So I can understand what some of the residents are saying, that we're increasing the debt as it goes on through there. And so I just think, you know, we should put something together for it, but be very cautious on it of, of using the COs and when it should be and, and shouldn't be using them. And I think, you know, really for using COs and most of us on, on the enterprise fund, seems like, on, on the COs. So I'm just saying, you know, we need, we need to be very cautious on what we do. And, and it's just so easy to come back to the table and say, okay, we need X number of dollars. Let's just do it for CO. And so I think, you know, if that's on an emergency basis, that's, that's one thing. But if it's just coming in to do that and something that we could have planned for previous on it, maybe it's, you know, a different way to do that. So, but I'm not, not a big fan, you know, of COs unless it's an emergency basis.
They conclude your comments? Thank you. So I'll say, I agree also that I think the list is a little too broad. I starred letter D, which just seems to me to be kind of, it can be interpreted so many different ways, I think, in particular. ABC, E and F, or maybe a little closer to the type of framework that I would like to keep the COs inside of that box. D just seems really kind of open to Member Kamkar's point. I love that. Anyways, a horse can escape. On the bond referendums, one point that I wanted to provide to kind of tie back into something we spoke about earlier and direct this, I guess, to staff and journal, but also to Eric, just from a data perspective. We've got this new asset management program coming online. And I think that that's a really good opportunity for us to be super strategic and drill into the details when we start planning general obligations to go to the, GO bonds to go to the voters and get their approval. And we can really start thinking ahead, start anticipating where we're going to be spending our monies and not rely so heavily on the issuance of certificates of obligation. So that's, I'm excited about moving in that direction. And Eric, I just wanted to kind of get some feedback. Do you think that's a trend that will become more the standard operating procedure for this moving forward?
So I, I agree that the asset management software coming online is, is going to be a huge boon to being sort of data-driven in how we allocate funding for every, you know, just regular repair programs and reinvestment programs for our infrastructure. When it comes to using it on things that haven't been built yet or built out fully yet, I think we'll be able to use historical data to get a better idea of what we need to build into those programs as far as maintaining them. And I think in general, the, the level of data the program will be able to offer, and it'll take a little bit of data the program will be able to offer, and it'll take a little bit of time to get the data in there, and there'll be some road bumps, I'm sure. Um but that level of data and being able to communicate it out will build trust with the public and giving them access to it through open data and things like that, so they can see the quality of their streets and infrastructure in their neighborhood. And, you know, that'll certainly play into future bond issuances and public support for those as well.
Yeah, and I I s- sometimes struggle to really wrap my brain around even having a bird's eye view of what the money that we've previous previously spent through at instance of whatever it is, a CO, a GO, whatever, and see kind of what the return on that has been and, you know, lifespan of assets and just kind of the the impact on the city. Um so I'm really looking forward to having more of these dashboard-level views of how our money is impacting our city. So um I think that would kind of help me to provide direction on issuance of CO. And as as opposed to, I do think that probably we have a consensus up here that uh, you know, the majority of what we spend should have voter buy-in and voter approval. And I I hope that better data will allow us to have more foresight in taking these projects to the voters. Welcome back, Mayor.
Very brief uh time online, so it was good to see one of our one of our veterans getting uh recognition. So it's like Councilmember Perez is unmuted.
Uh, yes, a couple more things to add. Uh, just um since uh item six B is um about the two thousand four bond referendum planning, um no, that's cheerfully want to talk about that separately or not. Um but since we're on that item, uh, a few things that I've brought up in the past, at least with the two thousand four bond referendum, I know the project that uh one, uh, at least me and one of the members said that's a priority for that is phase two of Independence Park. Um uh, I don't think that I have enough input on uh the other needs of the city right now to be able to definitively what should be on there. Uh, but I know that's the one that um at least council's given some direction as a uh as a priority for us, since we missed that opportunity in the last bond referendum. And we've heard from a lot of citizens that that's important to them. Um, the other thing that I wanted to discuss, um, in this may dovetail a little bit into the bond referendum, depending on how uh council wants to um wants to fund this. But I'd like us in this budget year to fund um a um uh a a study of our um uh the sidewalk repair and how expansive it is. Uh, we talked about bas- basically making that a a capital project as opposed to constantly trying to do a gap and um and trip hazard repair sporadically over um uh over the year, and we end up underfunding it by less than a third of what we what we know we need to just be able to keep up. Um, I'd like us, uh, again, continuing that discussion, to go ahead and fund a study, uh, i- if not even in this budget year, um or in the twenty twenty budget year, but maybe as a mid-year um uh mid-year allocation to for us to have a an idea, you know, how expansive that that capital project would need to be and, you know, how much money would we need to allocate to it to be able to uh to get the sidewalk throughout Pearland, all the gaps closed, all the trip hazards repaired, all of the sidewalk that was built either by developers or by by capital project that's already showing a failure, get that up to a level of service, maybe develop a PCI-type um uh measurement. I believe we discussed something of that, uh, something like that in the in the the recent past, a PCI measurement for us to determine, you know, what what's going to be our priority, what's not going to be our priority. I'd really like us to get primed if it's um uh if it's uh something that is affordable, maybe we can do it in twenty twenty-two uh with uh with available funding. If it's the if the if the funding's not that significant, if it's a ten million dollar project uh to get us to where we want to go, then maybe that's something we need to look at in twenty twenty-four. But I'd like us to be able to prime by uh by the end of this budget cycle with with uh an informed study. How do we want to um uh how do we what's the best mechanism for us to move forward with the sidewalk repair of capital project? This will go into what we're talking about later, which is how do we want to prioritize uh street repair? If we pull almost all of the gap uh program and the sidewalk repair out of what we need in a in a yearly allocation and all we're doing is routine maintenance and the developers are taking care of the larger gaps, uh, where we don't think we want to uh we want to fund that much, developers are as we do street projects, take care of the larger gaps, then we can mo- move more money into street repair uh and prioritize that over the uh over the next few. Um, and I do think, uh, you know, this is more of a um uh more of a general rule about what we want to do with debt, but it does tie into infrastructure. Um, you know, I'd like us to get into a ten or fifteen-year strategic plan, starting in this year, uh, with how do we, if we agree as a council, we want to uh do as we've talked about before, um, you know, create a metric, a cap for what we want our our uh debt rate to be with our overall tax rate. Um, and and the number I had thrown is, and it just it just as a number to start with, to start the discussion with, if we want to set that uh that cap at fifty percent, we never exceed fifty percent of uh of our overall tax rates, uh, have that go towards debt. Obviously, we can't do that now. We can't even do that immediately after the Ters gets retired. But if we set that goal, we can use that as a way to plan each and every year. What is if we if we take on this bond in twenty twenty-four, what does that mean for us in twenty thirty-four with meeting that metric of a fifty-fifty share or if it's a sixty-forty share or some other metric? But um I think since we've we've talked, we've had a couple of members that have talked at at nauseam about what they believe are um are the how expansive our debt obligation is and their concerns about that, then I think we need to give staff guidance specifically on what we feel is a responsible debt obligation as opposed to just objecting to the fact that we're taking on more debt. Um, I I think my personal opinion is we're our our current debt load is healthy and uh we're not in any kind of danger. But if we want to, if we really want to provide more more guidance to that, then we need to give staff some direction so they know what to plan around.
Okay. Any other thoughts, comments?
Mayor, I wanted to just add one thing that I I forgot to mention, and I see Member Kamkar's hand up. Um, but a- as far as the drainage goes, I know that staff is going to bring the CIP back to us separately, but um I did want to just add, Member Perez brought up um exploring options for potentially setting an enterprise fund. And I think it's great that we're thinking about building out additional drainage infrastructure, but I do want to uh explore alternative funding mechanisms to maintain whatever infrastructure we do build out. So I would be in favor of that coming back to council for uh future consideration, just to kind of look and see what those options are. Councilmember Kamkar?
Uh, yeah, there's a question for Mr. McCarter. Um, tab two, page seven, the last paragraph under uh fiscally responsible, has a very innocuous uh line, and I kind of wanted to get some perspective. I think Mr. McCarter's probably the the expert on our budget. I'm going to go ahead and read it so the audience can see this. Um, uh, general ru- general revenue cash. Uh, in recent years, the general fund has not had the capacity to be used as a reliable tool for funding capital projects. The uh, the thing that caught my eye there was reliable tool. Uh, Mr. McCarter, do you have any thoughts um on why why that general fund has become less reliable over time?
Sure, it's 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 growing operational needs that have eaten up the general fund. You know, that that cash that comes in has gone to um, you know, onboarding, you know, continuous onboarding for firefighters to open fire station number eight. We've talked about vehicles. Uh, we've talked about additional streets and sidewalks. All that cash is coming from general fund. Um, so I think, you know, there is a need and even the um the project we talked about that was originally funded with COs, the traffic that it that got cash funded, you know, that's something that should really be cash-funded out of general fund and programming that out when we have these increasing operational needs um has been very difficult. And we have not been able to plug that in, in addition to more money for streets and sidewalks, more vehicle replacements over the last several years.
Let me ask you a question. Do you think we just plain have more obligations than we have money? Is that essentially what you're telling me?
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
Are you essentially just telling me we have more needs than we have the dollars for, or is it more wants?
Uh, more needs, yeah, absolutely.
All right. And then, uh, one other thing, uh, under paragraph three, same page, um, second, when considering the appropriate funding mechanism, it is important to consider equity over time. Uh, what is this? What are you trying to convey in this memo on that paragraph?
Sure. So this is kind of getting into some of the theory of of equity on on how we pay for things that will benefit the city over the course of many, many years. So if we're um building a a road or some major project, um, you know, maybe a recreation center or something like that, that's going to be operational for thirty years, and you fund that with cash right now, that cash is is coming out of taxpayer pockets right now. And then those future taxpayers um are not contributing to that. So when you use debt and you stretch it out over the life of the project, you're paying for that over the useful life. So those taxpayers are absorbing um absorbing the cost of that over the useful life as they're benefiting from that asset. Again, kind of a theoretical approach, but that's just one component of of how we use debt.
Let me ask you a question, just following up. What is the length of a certificate of obligation for a debt? What what is the timeline on the repayment of that?
I believe they're twenty years.
Okay. So in theory, it's probably not smart to build a capital project that's a thirty or forty-year useful life with a twenty-year debt, just because you will have paid off faster than if you had gone to a bond issue, correct?
Those lengths are set in the financial policies. So to change that, we would have to revisit the policies for that. Um, generally, you want to have the 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 issuance match the useful life of the debt. The the bigger concern is if if uh the useful life of the asset is shorter than the debt. So if we're if we're issuing twenty-year debt for a ten year project.
I'm a Texas Aggie. I'm not super smart, and you're talking real fast. Can you repeat those last two sentences there?
Sure. So in the financial policies is where that twenty-year is set. So to change that, we would have to amend those policies. I think the bigger concern and something that you want to keep in the back of your head when you're talking about the length of issuances relative to the asset, is that you don't want the useful life of the asset to be shorter than the life of the debt. So you're not, you have something that lasts for ten years or useful life for ten years and you're doing twenty-year debt on it. We structure our debt in a way so that doesn't happen. Um, but that's that, I think, is the bigger concern, rather than buying an asset with twenty-year debt that lasts longer. Um, so that would be my answer.
Let me ask you a question. Do most people, most municipalities usually match the length of the issuance for the length of the asset?
When it's shorter than twenty years, yes. Longer than that, I would have to defer to our financial advisor, but we can follow up on that.
If I could, Member Kamkar, a couple of clarification additions. Um, what Mr. Kam, what Mr. McCarter said is very true and very standard. Uh, you know, that the asset may, you know, with good maintenance and so forth, last longer than, and uh that's per- perfectly typical. Uh, we have uh edited and uh I believe our water, surface water plant, given the scale of that and the uh s- uh life of that, it has gone longer. I don't remember if it's twenty-five or thirty-off down my head. But uh, we've and we've also gone shorter uh when it was uh made sense. And that is the best example. That's Ters, where we had interim financing, where we wouldn't have, uh, we are just the bank on that. And so we borrowed that for, you know, uh, to match up with the time of the Ters. So there there's exceptions on long and short when it was appropriate.
Nothing further.
Yeah, I I I think to go along with what Councilmember Kamkar's talking about, in in addition to that, it it's just the lifecycle cost. I mean, it's just like in buying a house or, you know, those types of things, or or a a commercial building, an office building and those types of things. You're you're going to have a a debt payment and it's it should, you know, it should match that. Everybody'd like to, you know, own that home, you know, pay cash for it. But the reality is, um, in in building certain infrastructure, it it all goes to the lifecycle cost. And part of that lifecycle cost is understanding the cost of maintenance. Um, you know, you you put up a building, it's got to be re-roofed at some point in time. And do you do you issue debt for that? Or do you pay cash for that? I mean, all of those questions need to be asked and and answered in the process. Um, you know, historically, we've done twenty-year debt issuance. That's the reason why it's in the policy. But again, if it makes sense to do a twenty-five-year or a thirty-year, given the asset, then you then you look at that. The question, especially with the cost of money today, um, you know, maybe not, you know, twelve, fifteen, eighteen years ago when when debt was five percent. But today, if it's two percent or less, it it might make sense to take advantage of that. Um, those are all good questions and good concerns to 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 look at, especially if it can help us on our debt rate and free up cash for, you know, really truly services that that are needed in our in our community. These are all just, they're they're finance policies that need to be looked at in a deep dive. Not saying that there's right or wrong answers necessarily in all of them. It's just how do we want to look and and be ten years from now, twenty years from now, thirty years from now? Any other comments, questions? All right. I guess we can move on.
So the next paper's on the property tax rate planning. And just to qualify before I get to him, Mr. McCarter, this is really, uh, the paper is talking about the uh new SB two and trying to explain background just for council's background. I don't really think this'll um kick in, but it has some implications for timing and uh terms and so forth. And even though it says rate, this really isn't about quote-unquote the number, it's about the process. So.
Sure. Thanks. Thanks, Mr. Pearson. So um, like Mr. Pearson said, this is the uh the property tax kind of planning white paper. This is the first year that we've done a dedicated white paper. Usually, we bake this in with the capital financing, but given the changes with SB two, um, you know, we carved it out and gave it its own dedicated paper here. So um on page thirteen here, the first page of the white paper, um, is is kind of one of the headlines, if you will. It's the the debt rate projection. Um, this is done by our financial advisor and has been updated with the um the assessed value growth from last fiscal year. Uh, you'll remember, a year ago, um, we decided to shift from uh a level to structured principles. So that's all baked in here um in this this projection uh for your reference and looking at our assumptions in the out years, the five years in fiscal year twenty twenty-two, and then kind of ratcheting down by a half a percentage over the life of the CIP. Um, moving along, uh, we see our our kind of comparable cities, if you will, on the um debt to O and M ratios. Um, this is something that we focus on a lot, uh, the the ratio of debt to operations. Um, the debt component is set by statute, and we have to cover those. So that is something uh that's set by our CIP and our issuances annually. And then the O and M rate, I don't want to say we have more flexibility on it, but that's that's determined on the needs on the O and M side. Um, the statutes there set a three percent or three and a half percent, rather, uh, limit on that rollback rate now. Um, so those, um, we've we've closed that gap between O and M and debt over the last five or six years. Um, so we're kind of working towards that long-term goal to get to the fifty-fifty ratio. Um, on page fifteen, we have a discussion about the uh potential debt to O and M ratio. It's been kind of an informal goal that we've been working towards, but there's been discussion on council of making that uh a little more formal and formalizing a plan to get there. Um, and then really, the the balance of the white paper talks about Senate Bill Two. Um, and there's a lot of nuances in here. I think some of the headlines is, um, they went ahead and changed all the terminology on us. So just when you got used to rollback rate, um, that's now the voter-approved tax rate. Um, the um effective tax rate is the no new revenues tax rate. So we have to relearn that type of thinking. Um, probably the biggest change is the uh rollback rate or voter-approved tax rate going from eight percent to three and a half percent. Um, and that three and a half percent is now really a hard cap because if we go over that three and a half percent, it's an automatic election. Uh, whereas with prior rules, we could have exceeded the rollback rate, and then we could have been petitioned for an election, but it wouldn't have happened automatically. Now it happens automatically. Um, and there's some discussions in here about some potential conflicts in the law itself that need to be resolved, but lays out kind of a timeline for that. Um, another interesting component, and as Mr. Pearson said, we're not proposing to use this or anticipating to use this, but um any of the increment that's not used, um, and by increment, I mean, the difference between our adopted tax rate and that voter-approved tax rate, three and a half percent cap, can be banked uh for three years, and it's a rolling three years. Um, so if council wanted to, we could use that unused increment or that difference between those two rates in a future year to increase the tax rate uh over that three and a half percent cap. Um, there's a scenario on on page sixteen that's just there for illustration purposes only, but to just kind of show how that math works behind the scenes. Um, but really, to put it in layman's terms, just anything that we don't use between our adopted tax rate and that three and a half percent cap, we get to keep in the bank for three and a half years and you or three years and use it if we want in a future budget. Um, there's some information in here about the disaster declaration. We shared that when um the disaster declaration occurred for COVID and did not take advantage of that or did not choose to go with the uh the the changes there. Um, and then there's some discussion on 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 adoption itself, um, and some nuances there. So that's the paper itself. I think uh in terms of direction, you know, there's been discussion about the O and M to debt rate uh ratio, if if we wanted to formalize that via policy or any other mechanism, uh, that would be the direction I think we're looking for here. Or any questions, comments?
Questions, comments? Councilmember?
Yeah. Um, another great white paper. I mean, I haven't seen
Yep. Another great white paper. I mean, I haven't seen Senate Bill two broke in, broke out this way. Very good, great info. In terms of the the fifty fifty, yeah, we can set that policy, and then we're going to go out in twenty twenty four and ask the voters to approve more debt. So I mean, I guess that, not to go back to COs, but this is why I want to take it to the voters. If the voters approve it, they want it, they vote for their tax increase, then so be it. And as long as we're continuing to roll out new bond referendums, I don't see, I don't see why we would we would pass something that says we need to target fifty fifty and then turn around and say, here's a five year CIP that will be voter approved, that will take us out of that fifty fifty ratio.
Comments, questions? Councilmember Perez?
Yeah, I would say I don't disagree with what Member Carbone is saying. My my purpose for bringing that up is continuously, when we have these budget discussions, we have, as a council, discussed what our debt ratio is and why is it growing so high and what are our policy? And, you know, I don't, if we establish a policy, whether it's fifty fifty as a guidance or fifty fifty as a hard rule, we have something to give staff to say, this is what we're willing to do and this is what we're not willing to do. So that as they plan capital projects for us, there's less for them to have to to go back and forth with us when we've told them, we don't want to exceed this rate. Again, I think Member Carbone and I are saying the same thing, that as long as we're responsible with our tax rate and it's our tax rate to our appraised value is within common norms, which it is, it's well below, then we're doing fine. We're doing, we're doing our responsible job. But, you know, cutting off, cutting ourselves off at the knees kind of at the last minute and saying, I don't like where our debt's going, so we can't, we can't do this project, or we can't take on this debt, or kind of on the tail end of of planning, really is just not, it's it's not a good way of managing our capital projects. If it's not the will of council for us to set that that cap, then let's not do it. I wouldn't say it's a high priority for me personally, but I would like us to have a true discussion of, do we want to set a policy so staff has better guidance? And again, fifty fifty does not necessarily have to be the measure. It can be anything, but it needs to, if we're going to complain about it, we might as well give the complaints preemptively as opposed to on the on the last day when we're approving a project for bond.
I agree with a lot of that from Member Perez. I think the big picture here is what we're all saying on a lot of these different things is, we want to, you know, we don't want to just get to stuff and and vote it down or not know where we're going. We want the council to set clear guidance and that be the policy and and we stick with it. I think kind of the, and so I agree with Member Perez, that that the council, being concerned about debt, should say, what is that limit that we want to set? What is the guidance? So it's not just this frustration, like, oh, just the debt is too high, but it's like a specific thing. I think that's exactly right. I think the kind of where the question comes in or where the debate comes in is, what is the right metric that we're using to assess our debt? And I don't know if this, the ratio of debt to O and M is necessarily the best one. I mean, theoretically, right, you could just go and spend a lot more money on the O and M side, and that proportionally would make the percentage that you're spending on debt lower. But that doesn't mean you're being fiscally more responsible. And so I don't know if that's the right metric. Another one that has been proposed is the debt over assessed value. I know some people like that, some people don't. I don't have a strong answer on this right now, but I think that, I do think that we definitely need to put a standard in place. I just think that maybe there are better metrics to be used where we could establish what debt level we're comfortable with.
May I ask a question of staff? I'm not sure that you would have this answer offhand, but just trying to think ahead, if we were to move forward with whatever the number is for the next five or even ten years of CIP projects, and then is it eight years from now, the reimbursement hits us and the value of the TERS comes online, this fifty fifty guidance seems a lot more achievable at that point. Is that the case? Or?
I'll take a crack. It solves itself in twenty twenty nine. I mean, that's just the simple fact of it. And somewhat what Member Orlando said, I think, has merit in terms of, you know, that ratio seems kind of, it sounds straight, it's straightforward. I guess I would encourage looking at, you know, page four, there's a lot going on there, but it describes a lot for a good reason. And that's, you know, that outstanding to AV, that's your ability to pay, that's what the credit agencies look at. And, you know, we've come down on that steadily, as you see over the years, even, you know, we're going to go tick up a bit with the the TERS interim, but that's going to solve itself too. So, you know, that that ratio, maybe in addition to anything else, would be a strong one to to use for a policy.
Yeah, and I think that's what I was trying to illustrate, is that to me, it just somewhat seems not really the best metric. And I think that trying to look ahead, it's really not going to be as big of an issue. We're thinking fifty fifty right now is something that's going to be, you know, we'll have to work towards that. But if we're, I think, we are fiscally responsible moving forward and we do hit that timeline and that value comes online, then I think that number is going to kind of be like, well, why did we set this? This, you know, is way off the mark at this point. So looking ahead ten years from now, I think that, yeah, trying to find a better metric. And I appreciate staff's feedback. Thank you.
And I just want to, I feel like I was admiring the problem a little bit, like, I don't, I don't have a good answer or whatever. So maybe the guidance is, and I don't think this needs to be a huge research project, but what are the handful of metrics and ratios that are are used to measure this? Because Clay said, and Member Hernandez said, you know, like, oh, this is, maybe this isn't something, like, it takes care of itself. But I guess from the perspective of at least some council members, if it is still an issue. And so it's, I do think there's still merit in setting that limit. So maybe two of the the things, two of the metrics are the ones we're talking about, this debt over assessed value and the the debt to O and M ratio. But maybe just, are there any other ones? If we could just have a brief paper, not try to reinvent anything, but just kind of the standard stuff that's already out there in municipal finance. And if we could just see that and and maybe revisit it sometime soon.
Councilmember Perez?
Yeah, I think, I think we're all, we're all kind of saying the same thing. You know, I don't want, I don't want fifty fifty to be a guidance, any kind of station poll for what we're planning to do. Again, I use, I brought that up because I don't remember an election year where somebody didn't bring up our our debt tax rate to our overall general fund tax rate as a, this is why you need to elect me, because I need to fix this problem. Because it's, it really isn't that our, we are, we are a healthy community when it comes to the tax rate that we currently have with respect to our overall budget numbers, with respect to our assessed value. But if we, as a council, have decided that that is a metric we want to use, like our percentage of tax rate to our overall or debt rate to our over tax rate, then let's, let's solve that problem as opposed to complaining about it. You know, I'm just not, I mean, as an engineer, I am, I'm about solutions, not about complaints. So I don't particularly think that we have a debt issue. But as with every organization, I'd like to get the debt down if we can, but what does that mean for us? If we want to say, as a community, our priority is taking our tax, our, or making us a community that has less of a tax burden, that's fine. We can provide that guidance. But we have to, as council members, as elected officials, go out and tell the community when they ask for a new road, it ain't coming, because we're paying down debt. That is the consequence of what of that that action. And again, let's provide clear direction on what our policy wants to be as opposed to just saying, I don't like the debt rate, but without any metric to go by. If we're comfortable with where we are, and I'm comfortable with where we are, and I'm comfortable that staff has been good stewards of of the city's money and this and the debt rate, then we don't have to change anything. But if we, as a council, feel as if we have a level of discomfort with with our our debt policies or where our debt is is heading, then I think now's the time to tell staff, as Member Orlando said, let's, let's take this in the next step and sit down and give some, and create some guidance for how we want to manage our debt, short term and long term. If we don't want to do that, if there's not four members that want to reestablish policy, if there's four members that feel comfortable that we, that staff and and council of the past and trust that council of the future is going to be responsible with our debt burden based on the policies that we currently have, then there's no point in waiting, wasting staff's time doing a white paper that we're not going to do anything with. So I mean, maybe we can all provide guidance to staff, whether they, whether we want them to move forward with a subsequent white paper to say, what are our options with respect to guidance of how we want to, or guidance on our debt load for short and long term planning. I think Member Orlando said that, if I'm summarizing correctly, Member Orlando said he would be supportive of that. If there's three other members that believe that, then let's get staff working on it. If not, then we we've set our piece and the debt, the debt policies remain as is.
There were a little?
Yeah, I don't know what the correct metric is either. John, is is the debt to operations ratio, is that considered among city governments as a proper gauge of how the city's managing its debt?
I'd say it's one of a few. You know, the debt to AV, I think, is probably more indicative of our ability to pay. And then, you know, the the O and M to debt is more how we're using that money. But I think the idea of coming back with with more than just those two metrics and maybe what the intent behind each one is, is a is a good path forward, I think, for staff.
And you mentioned the possibility of, should we formalize that debt to O and M ratio and make it part of the OKRs that we're talking about? If so, then like Perez said, Councilman Perez said, we need to get some guidance or provide you guys with some guidance on how to move forward. If if that ratio is is a proper gauge, and you look at it and compared, we're not really doing that well. Councilman Perez said he wasn't concerned about the debt right now. I'm a little concerned with it. As you guys probably remember, I voted against the tax increase last year. And I don't see me changing much this year with a one point seven five cents increase, just on the debt side. And if you look at how we're doing against other cities in the in the area, we're not doing too good there either. So again, I don't know what the proper metric is, but on both of those measurements, we're, we're not looking good. I think I might be the fourth one that says, let's provide the city with some guidance on this this issue.
Councilmember Rowan's?
Yeah, that's my favorite subject, you know that. You know, I don't know what the actual, if we come in and set the debt rate to be a certain percentage. And I think, I think it was just said there is the ability to pay and how we're using the money, that would be a big concern on it. You know, we didn't think that back in two thousand and eight, when people come in and we did the bond issue back during that time, and we held off. And I've taken a little bit of heat of that over the last year or so. People say, yeah, look at what we're paying so far. But it, and, you know, and even when you go back to and some of the budget process last year, they talked about two thousand and eight's great recession from our own financial people. And so that's why we held off on it. I think, you know, it goes back into not what we can afford to do, but but also of what we're using the money for, and not just say, okay, it's a fifty fifty ratio or whatever. And in some of these, we're comparing ourselves to different types of cities or different cities, which up in the Dallas area with with Frisco and and those areas up through there, which are totally different than what what we have here in Pearland. I'm just, you know, I certainly, you know, I'm concerned about the debt, you know, rate and what the tax rate is and how it can go up. And I think anything that we do to touch that area on a bond issue, whatever, that it ought to have the numbers that beside it is saying, okay, if we do that, and as this is proved, the tax rate will go up to this amount or go down or whatever. And and to be very honest and open to the people that live in this city. But we're at a period of time where things are really uncommon as we're going through here. You know, we talk about the virus and what we had on it, and now they're talking about, we got two or three more strains of virus coming in, and we don't know how that's going to impact us. And you see a lot of people and and a lot of them in inside the city that are not working, they've lost their jobs. And maybe not lost their jobs, but they hadn't worked in a long time. And some of them has lost the jobs and what have you. And so they're looking for other ways, too. I've gotten, you know, several calls from from people that that have talked about that, that the city is just, you know, spreading for health and going through there without the concern of the residents. It may look good on the books now, like Perez says, that, hey, you know, we can handle that and handle all that extra debt. But, you know, that doesn't tell us what happens, you know, in the next year or what happens after we go through another four, five, six months of the virus and how it impacts, you know, the residents of, hey, go and look at it now, and you in your top three areas in here, as far as staffing and everything, it's, you know, the city of Pearland, School District, Pearland, and Alvin, they're all tax oriented people that, you know, that's what they're living on for mine and yours and everybody else's tax rate through there and the taxes. So I think we need to be very cautious on anything. And I think, you know, that that's what we're looking for out of the city staff is saying, you know, what we can afford, we can afford, and be very cautious, how is this going to impact us? So more of that have come up later on, I'm sure.
Bottom line is, let's not issue any more debt. I mean, we've talked about paring back to how we're going to issue COs, and we talk about a twenty twenty four bond referendum. I think this discussion really needs to coincide with the twenty twenty four bond referendum. Besides that, we're really not moving the needle. I mean, we got a five year CIP, we got the plan laid out. So in terms of of talking about ratios and having staff do all this work, it's not going to change a damn thing until we get closer to that twenty twenty four bond referendum. So I'd rather see the focus on cleaning up the the CO policy and procedure and and then on other things that would actually move the needle now. Because I mean, staff, correct me if I'm wrong, that's, I mean, we're on this trajectory, we've got debt already approved. What what am I missing here? And if we have a have a memo that tells us all this, and we put this policy in place, I don't know that it changes anything.
You summarized it, and and I'll go back to that table that John pointed out as the cycle, and those are the points, because we're going to have an issue in June. We've had an intention reimburse, and it's paying for projects that councils agreed to. We don't invent these things. We recommend and councils adopted the CIP and the budgets, and we're carrying that out. So happy to bring that policy back ASAP, and that will be off and running for that.
Yeah, I think we need to look at a little bit more of a formal policy. The thing that that concerns me is what happens between now and twenty twenty nine, and just our ability to continue to to maintain infrastructure, which, you know, and what will we look like in twenty twenty nine when when that TERS gets paid off? And I know that's a, that's a, that's a big marker, you know, that's out here in our future. That's eight years away. And so what happens in the meantime? We need to, you know, possibly look and think outside the box. Maybe there's some other forms that we can do. I've got some thoughts and ideas. I don't want to belabor today necessarily with it. But the debt load is a concern. It's a concern because it it squeezes what we have, the ability to, like I said, maintain infrastructure, pay our employees, keep the proper employees, those types of things, without exploding the the tax rate. And I don't think anybody has the appetite to explode our tax rate. We certainly could, but I think we would all fade that heat. So I think we need to have a discussion of what's, what's our interim between now? And I know we had that discussion last year, you guys had that discussion with how we restructured some of our finance. But it's still eight years to get to, you know, when when the TERS gets paid off. to get to, you know, when, when the TIRS gets paid off. Um, and like I said, I have some ideas, threw them out there during the campaign. They're, they're somewhat radical ideas compared to where we are, certainly outside the box. But they could get us 10 years down the road to where we don't have to sit idle on, on some of our, uh, maintenance needs and those types of things. Looks like, uh, Councilmember Cam Carr unmuted, so I want to make sure I get back to him.
Yeah. Um, I, I would just tell you, there's been a variety of comments. Um, first of all, the, the debt to AV as a calculation of like, do we do debt or not? As Mr. McCarter pointed out, capability and ability to pay doesn't mean we should. Um, I might have the ability to go run up $20,000 on my credit card. Doesn't mean I should. Um, us using that as a metric, um, I, I mean, let me give you an example. House prices in AV are probably going to go up eight to 10% this year. And that's because people are moving all over the place. There's a shortage of housing, but that doesn't mean everybody now has eight to 10% more ability to actually pay that debt. Um, the 50 50% on the, um, O and M is a misnomer. Um, that, that's a placeholder number. We're in a very different state of being than those other cities. Um, Frisco, Plano, they have gigantic, uh, business tax bases that they can off shift and change those numbers. So going and playing with that, we, we have to focus on what is the situation in the city. Um, now to a point that other members have made of, um, you know, we don't have a problem. Um, we do have a problem. The reason we've been talking about water billing and, and all this is because some conspiracy theorists went and said that the reason we're having water bills is because meters don't work and, and there's, there's leaks and, and we're hiding the ball. It's actually because the debt is really high and the water rate is changing. We don't have, and we don't have the 200,000 users using right now. We have two thirds of them and they're paying a higher rate. So we do have to adjust what I, what I would try to tell the council and, and our brothers and the staff is, um, what we're willing to pay and what we should pay are two different discussions. Um, the, the members of Harris County, the people that lived there passed a $2 billion bond issue because they actually cared about drainage and being safe. And that was an 8614 issue in early boat. That was 8713 on day of. Um, the people will pay for the right things. If we're buying the Taj Mahal of dog facilities, that's a different ballgame. If I'm willing to pay for something that when the storms come, um, will actually prevent me from having to leave like a refugee dragging myself through water, I would probably think most of the residents in the city will pay for that debt because they know it actually helps them. Um, so I think we have to differentiate the ability to pay and what do we want to be paying on. Um, and the reality situation, and I said this earlier, um, the idea that we're not going to do a drainage bond issue more than once in this decade is absolutely not feasible. Like we're just already behind. The reason that our infrastructure is so poor right now is because we have not actually wanted to pay for it. Um, the last things I would tell you, and, and I would, from a policy point of view, um, we really as a council need to look at how we're going to use that unused increment and when are we going to decide to use that? Right now, uh, because of SB two being recently adopted, we're, we don't, we don't have a big strategy yet. We need to, because there will be an opportunity to use that increment if we keep cutting, uh, versus that new, new rate, when to use it. The second thing I would tell you is we need to put some rules on the road of when we want to increase the tax rate around disaster. Essentially SB two says you can go back to the old rules of going up to 8% without an election, depending on a disaster declaration. I don't have guidance yet on when we should or should not do that. But if this, if this policymaking body is going to make policy, those are the two areas we need to really do that because there's literally untrodden ground there right now.
Uh, I, I just want to quickly sum this up and, and move on to the next thing, but just kind of echoing what member Carbone said and just everything, talking about the metrics, talking about all this, this is what it fundamentally comes down to. We, we're, we're not going to, a- as member Cam Carr said, there, there's all these needs. So we're, we're not going to have a bond referendum every two or three years and lower the debt. That's, it, it's not going to happen. So it's just this fantasy land to think that we're going to reduce or keep our tax rate the same, lower debt and spend more money on all these big projects. It, it's just not going to happen. So we can talk about the, the rates and all that, but that, that's what politicians don't want to acknowledge. Like there's this trade-off and if you have to spend a bunch more money on capital projects, you're going to have more debt. It's, it's as easy as that. So maybe as we work on that, yeah, that 2024 potential bond issue, we can, we can talk through that, but we can't simultaneously say, we want to spend a bunch more money, uh, and we want to lower the debt. I mean, it, it just doesn't work.
All good comments. I think, uh, I don't know if staff has any direction with all of
No. I mean, th- this is a recurring conversation, obviously, and, but it's important. And, and I think, you know, they're linked and, and, uh, we, we, we're at a growth stage. We need to build buildings and infrastructure and we've got a, a good one. Uh, have all those things, but we're catching up and we'll be there. And, uh, now we gotta, as you said this week, uh, get into that, how we're going to maintain that mode. And that's, uh, the next challenge. So.
Yeah. That, that's the part that scares me is our growth rate will be coming down. We've had, we've, we've, we've been able to rely on growth to help pay for some of this and keep our rates where we somewhat stable, but it's, it's a little scary in the next 10 years as this growth rate slows, but yet we've still got a lot of need for, for infrastructure. So, uh, we're obviously, we're not going to solve it today, but I think, I, I think, uh, the public as well as staff has a sense of, of, of some concerns. And maybe we need to do a deep dive one day and just how we come up with either a more formal policy, uh, or guidance or something. So we, we can set, you know, a track moving forward, whether that's going out to the public and, and having some, you know, voter approved, you know, side of things. There's a, you know, the Vader and some other stuff that's in here. If it's well done, it's well communicated. Again, it, the public's willing to pay the bill for certain things. Certain things they're not. I, I agree with Councilmember Cam Carr on that, on that comment. Uh, but what is it? And, and we need to, we need to determine that. So let's go ahead and move on in our agenda. Well, at this rate, probably.
Yeah.
Fly by the time we get.
So, uh, the next paper, um, is a recap of how we've, uh, maintained and, uh, I think adapted during the COVID pandemic and how we've stepped into a, a new public health role. And that's only heightened over the last couple, few weeks as we've gotten into the, now the vaccine business. Um, and, and I think what's important for the council for future is, you know, that reality, you know, being able to handle that. But I think we also want to look at our, you know, our overall preparedness as always for all hazards and, um, you know, not just health emergencies, but, uh, how we learn from this one, um, and invest in, uh, you know, invest in this function. You know, it's, it's the old, uh, you know, repair the roof when the sun's shining. And, uh, that's what we, we strip, tried to do over the last, uh, years and, and since Harvey frankly, and, and I think it's paying, I know it's paying off now. Um, so for the council, just to get it back to you quickly as possible, the questions here, just acknowledging that public health role and, uh, ask any comments or advice on that. And then, um, there's another thing. Uh, oh, if there's another CARES Act, like they're calling that stimulus, you know, uh, if there's any initial thoughts on categorization of that, probably, we don't know the rules. So it's a little bit ethereal to talk about that too, too much now, but you know, that, that does look like there'll be something and maybe we'll get some more, uh, grant monies to help shore us up there. Nothing add?
Comments? Thoughts?
I, I agree. I think that's a better discussion for when we know the requirements, uh, on that part. In terms of the public health function, I've been extremely impressed with the vaccination distribution, um, and, and how quickly we've stood that up. Great work from the emergency management, um, office. Um, I, I don't know what the appetite looks like to stand up a, a city health function. I, I suspect low, um, but would like to say I, I think we've done tremendous with, with pretty limited resources and, and greatly appreciative of that.
Councilmember Cam Carr, see you unmuted there.
Uh, page 28, uh, tab two. Um, our second biggest expenditure on the CARES Act funding is to the ISDs. Um, if we have a second round, I think we need to be more considerate of what the city's needs are. Um, uh, but I, I echo a member Orlando's awesome point. Uh, we've done a great job with the Parkson Rock team, but no interest in standing up health department.
Thoughts, comments?
I think member Cam Carr is still speaking, but he's muted.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's finished? Okay.
Okay. Uh, thoughts? I, I do have some comments on this and I, we, we, we mentioned it, or I mentioned it on, on this past Monday night. Uh, I think it, it, it comes to preparedness. We do have a, a very prepared staff. They're well-trained. Uh, we've seen that not only, you know, in the, in the week past, but also in, in this distribution of whether it was water or vaccines, those types of things. We have a, a very prepared staff to be able to handle these types of incidents when they happen, but also making sure that we have the right, you know, preparedness in the aftermath, immediate aftermath, uh, be it a storm, be it an ice storm, these types of things. It's always that, that, that initial 72 hours. If you think about it, a storm blows through, the gulf comes in and still nobody can get in here because the storm hasn't cleared enough for, um, uh, relief and those types of things to get here. So, uh, building up some type of strategic reserve for water, food, MREs, those types of things to be able to handle the first, uh, 72 hours. Do that in a responsible way. We have water companies that are certainly willing to, to, to donate water to that type of a, of an initiative. I think the cost of the, the actual water and food and those types of things is, is, is minimal. Uh, the question is going to be where do we store it? How do we do that? I don't know that we have a warehouse that is just ready, willing and able to, to be able to house that. Uh, so how we, you know, put something together, uh, I guess a stair step. We've got, you know, between now and hurricane season, which is June 1, you know, what can we do on the interim, uh, to be prepared for this coming storm season? Um, and then long-term, what do we do to have our own, uh, facility where we can, we can house this type of thing? So, uh, taking staff to go see a facility tomorrow, or excuse me, Monday, um, that, that might be a good, you know, thought, uh, moving forward. Where would it go? Those types of things. I guess more to come, but I think the initial investment on something like that, uh, can be relatively small, but then the, the benefit can be tremendous in the, in the wake of a storm or wake of an ice storm like, like we just had. So I think those are some, some thoughts that I have. Obviously more to come as we learn more on how we do that. But I think, um, instead of us being dependent on Tedom or FEMA or somebody like that to get water in here, we strategically look at that on an annual basis and build our own program.
How many do we have dedicated to the health program now? Like?
We, we don't have people dedicated to the health program. We have, uh, people working on health issues.
Right. Yeah. Right. Just, and just, uh, just so you'll know, Councilmember, I think yesterday or Thursday for sure, we had as many as a hundred people working the vaccine pod. About 70% of those, so 70 of those were employees of the city, you know, taking away from their normal functions over to, to do this. So, yeah.
And you know, that, that they, uh, overall, everything's going on and, and, uh, you know, with the freeze and with the, um, virus and all of that, um, they've done a, uh, hell of a good job. And, uh, but again, that, that's an expense that we weren't thinking about having to do that. But I guess anytime, you know, this and what you just mentioned here, uh, living on the Gulf Coast, you know, uh, in hurricane season, I think, you know, it's not if we're going to have a hurricane, it's when, you know, we're going to have it. So I think this is a good program that we got in place, but it's, it's something that we didn't anticipate in the beginning. But thank God we got the money to, to come in and, and fund these things and, and do what the city has done for the residents over this period of time.
Clay, I guess, I guess Peter Martin would be the only, I guess, dedicated emergency management person, I mean, dedicated to emergency management. We have fire, we have police, we have public works, we have that, that, that have other jobs, right? Besides emergency management.
And you'll, that's typical, right? Is, uh, I mean, uh, but he's the coordinator and he, he does have a, a, add a full-time, uh, support, Melanie Roberts, who's excellent, a planner. So, uh, you know, the, between the two of them, we're in good shape, but their job, and that's why we moved into my office frankly, is that they have, to give them that cachet, uh, to go across anywhere they need and to, uh, you know, muster people for training and, and work. So, you know, hi- his work really is, uh, not during the storm. I mean, it obviously he does, but it's getting ready for that. So, uh, that's where his, that, that function comes in and, and that's how we do it.
And I don't, I don't, yeah, I, I really want to be careful, I guess, getting into a full-blown health department.
I'm not interested in it frankly, but unless you guys, somebody.
I, I, I'm not interested in doing that. Obviously when we have a, an emergency, that's a whole different or, or a different animal. Um, certainly I think the way we've got it, the structure, uh, people go into all hands on deck in the midst of a, of, of something. Unfortunately, the pandemic has, has just shown that it's a longer term deal than, than a, than a, than a hurricane or, or something of that nature that comes through. It's several weeks and then storm debris, and then it eventually is gone and we move on. Instead, we're, we've been in this for a year and, you know, we still have months to go with vaccines and those types of things. A little bit different. And I don't want to get caught up in that being our standard because it's not. It, it, it's truly, uh, God, I hate using this word. It's unprecedented in our lifetime. Uh, but it, it will, it, it, just like anything else, will fade and, and move on. So, uh, but I like, I like the structure that we have. I just think there's some things that we can do to tweak it and be really prepared for our residents, uh, on, on those, uh, relief efforts immediately after. Any other comments?
Yes, Mayor, I've got, uh, two, I guess. So one is, I, I like where it says immediate revision of city's hazard mitigation plan. And then kind of beneath that, um, and, and that said, to incorporate substantial pandemic response and recovery components into the design. Um, then we talked about, uh, potentially setting up, and I don't necessarily just share that sentiment. I don't think that I would be in favor. I know I'm not in favor of a actual health department. However, um, where it does talk about the creation of ad hoc committee, um, we have phenomenal resources in our city as we know with our provider partners such as Kelsey, Memorial, Herman, um, HCA. We've got non-direct provider, you know, health, uh, partners here such as Lonza. And I think bringing them forward to see not only how we can support them in, you know, times of disaster, but also how they can support us, I think would be phenomenal. I would be in favor of bringing them to the table, um, as we do start to work on these revisions to our, our planning for the future, uh, for, for future unprecedented events. Um, so I think that would be something I'd be wholly in favor of doing is reaching out to them, um, you know, and just trying to pull them in and, and utilize their expertise. I mean, we've got them here. They're a phenomenal resource to our residents. And I think that, uh, they could lend a lot of credibility as well as a lot of expertise to our, our processes. So that's all I've got there.
And, and, uh, to dovetail on that, I think other partners in our community that, that are always, um, willing to stand up and help HEB, Kroger, uh, companies like this who have logistics.
As well.
And, and, and several nonprofits, but they have logistics. They certainly know who is coming into their, their stores after the math, what they need, what they're looking for. That can give us some guidance. My, my guess is if, if asked, they would participate in helping stand up, you know, what we need as far as immediate resources. Uh, so we want to, we want to make sure that they're at that table as well. And if we, yeah, Christian Helping Hands, neighborhood centers, some of these, what, where and what can they be in the immediate aftermath of?
Counseling connections.
Counseling connections. Uh, certainly. And, and how, where and what can, do we mobilize them in, in the aftermath?
I think that's part of, uh, a, a key word that was brought forward previously, Mayor, was resiliency. Uh, and just to make sure that that is a big component of resiliency. It's not just, you know, to having sustainable and secure infrastructure, but it's also your ability to respond and coordinate. I appreciate that, Mayor.
Any other comments? Deal. Let's, uh, move towards sustainable infrastructure.
So the next, uh, paper up is, uh, the mid-year allocations. And, uh, this goes through first to explain, um, how we are able to have, uh, some flexibility at mid-year at, for choices if council chooses. Um, we, we, and the pandemic started, you know, we didn't have any frame of reference and we, uh, uh, pulled back administratively on, on a variety of expenses. Uh, came to, uh, as council's well aware, the revenues stayed strong, uh, throughout. And, uh, you know, so we're in a good, very good position. And, uh, not to let go unnoticed, we've achieved that 90-day goal already. I think that when we, uh, set that, when the council set that for ourselves, that that was, uh, you know, a, a longer term. So, uh, even with that and maintaining that, you know, we've got this flexibility. We do have some needs. Um, and, uh, you know, unfortunately particularly the, uh, fire station, um, capital items I'd, I'd mentioned and paying cash flows. Um, and then there's a variety of other things in there that, uh, we need to do. Um, I put the need to do the, uh, I put the need to do the quarterly billing, that's, that's almost a must. The parks and rec maintenance worker was just oversight on our part for the budget, so I'd like to get that back in there. But the rest of them, get some feedback on perhaps if council's interested in those coming back at mid-year. I will stipulate, and before we bring it back to you for any action, last year's, last year, last week's storm seems like a year ago. You know, there was, that's going to be some significant financial impacts to keep everything going, just staff-wise. And we need to quantify that. We'll be going for reimbursement, but that'll be long-term. So, you know, that, we should factor that in.
Member Camp Car.
Oh, yeah. I went through this with the, the team previously. And I think it's great that we've got excess dollars possibly to reallocate. What I would like to submit to the council and to the staff is that we, we think through what we want to prioritize. Obviously, we went through a climate, a climate change related event of some kind. We've got Minnesota weather down here in Texas. We always know when hurricane season comes, from June to October.
Lost your audio, sir. Member Camp Car.
Can I hear me?
Now, now we can.
Okay. Let me back up real quick. I think we've been through a tremendous situation with the climate changes, gigantic storm that we've had. We have our own challenges and we need to start standing up our emergency capabilities to respond specifically hurricanes. I want to read a memo for flood response boats dated March twenty-three, twenty-twenty. This is from Mr. Martin. Given the certainty of future flood events and uncertainty surrounding water depth, the city of Pearland must adopt a precautionary approach and acquire the capability to undertake rescue operations in water depths that exceed the capability of ground vehicles. The alternative is to rely on mutual aid, a dubious assumption that the flood response capability will come from some other source in time to alter the outcome of a disastrous scenario in Pearland. Reliance on this assumption increases the risk that the city will be unequipped should a major flood event revisit the city. This item is asking for boats at a cost of sixteen thousand dollars a boat to help do high-water rescue if necessary. What I heard the alternative was, was breaking into a academy. We should not put our first responders in stolen vehicles because we do not have preparedness. That's one item that I think we need to possibly address in this mid-year allocation. It would be very, very, very cheap for us to go buy ten boats at sixty thousand dollars a pop and still not barely touch any of this allocation. The second thing I would offer is we need to possibly look at adding some high-water rescue vehicles. From what I understand, we have six to eight that are salvage vehicles at the end of their useful life. I'm very uncomfortable putting a first responder into a salvage vehicle. The new price on that vehicle, I believe, is eighty-nine thousand dollars as previously estimated. We could buy one a year for five years and really increase our capability and put our first responders in actual vehicles that are, are not at the end of their useful life.
Thank you, Councilmember. Member Carbone.
Back to the, the item staff outline on page thirty-three and thirty-four. I guess, you know, I, I, I can understand the need for, for one and two. I don't quite follow the, the hub tracking. I think that, that needs some further discussion. Fire Station Two and Three repairs. We're continuing, or, well, let me ask, are we continuing to use the same architects and designer? I mean, it seems like these are, are damn near new stations that we're going to end up spending a half million on. Where's the, I guess, the recourse? Or, or the professionals we use to design and build these not standing behind their work? Or what's going on and what are we doing to change this? And are, are we building them too fast? Because they, they're, they're great-looking stations, but they look all similar. Does that mean we need to be preparing for all the new stations to be spending a half million dollars on unforeseen issues coming forward?
So those two were the same architect. We've not used that architect on the subsequent two that we've built or any of the future ones. And we've been in discussions with legal as far as what our recourses are.
I guess I'd like to follow up on that maybe from a little legal side in the future. So I mean, this is frustrating seeing that the issues we're having. I'm glad, glad to hear we're using different professionals moving forward.
Any other comments, questions?
Yeah, I would also just, I would also just ask, and I, I don't know necessarily what the dollar figure is that's associated with this, but in terms of the emergency preparedness, preparedness stuff, I, that's something that's on everybody's radar more front and center the last few weeks and, and months. But I toured the Alice Water Facility earlier this week with member Camp Car and some members of staff. And it was just striking to me that we have folks who were, were staying there for days on end to, to maintain and, and then reestablish water for everybody in the city of Pearland. And they're sleeping on the floor sometimes to, to stay there. And they're in this building that's made out of cinder blocks that the rain is seeping through the walls, as you can see. So I, I think there might be an opportunity for a modest allocation just to, just to improve their, improve their ability to stay there and, and not lay on the floor. So maybe that's, I, I don't know, maybe that's sealing up that building a little bit. Maybe that's a cot or something. But I, I think for a, a low dollar amount, we could treat the people who are keeping our city up and running in, in the disaster times a, a little bit better.
I just got one question on this, you know, going through, I think, what, we've got eight stations? That's what ultimately we have. And we're talking about forty-eight square miles. So we've got a station, well, it says that of every six square miles, we have a station in place now. When you look at the, where they're located at, you know, that would be a little bit further out on some of them. But, you know, for forty-eight square miles and, and of course, with the last one, the superstation. I don't know if there's something that you have to have, you know, a fire station never so many miles apart or cover the city. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, that's probably a little scope out of the scope there. I go back to, there is a whole paper on the Staff Neutralization Study, which goes over that. We have six stations. Seventh is on, on the radar, not near term, but, you know, next few years. And so that's all a function of travel time. And so that's, there, there's a plan for that and that's covered very well.
So this year, would that emergency management deal come in and we're supplying the cities, not cities, areas outside the city limits?
So two years ago, council asked and we negotiated and got created the Emergency Service District. So they're paying into us and they have been, this will be the second year of that.
What?
It's going to be the second year that the ESDs are paying into the city for their service.
Mayor, I've got a, a question for the minus five and six, the fire station repairs. It looks like the air conditioning issue exists at both Fire Station Two and Three. But there seems to be a difference in the price there between four ninety-five, which includes concrete work, it includes interior plumbing work, soil movement, well, the interior to address those issues. It, it seems like there's more work being done at Two, but not at that much more of a cost than just the addressing the air conditioning. Is that just miss, a misunderstanding on my part that the scope of work is relatively similar?
There was an allocation in the last budget amendment to address the, the issues with the, the paving and the sidewalks and the slab and the, and the plumbing associated with that fire station. So that's already in the works. And then this is mostly for the, the common things between the two, the air conditioning issues.
Okay. Yeah. So I, I think, yeah, if there's a possibility that we could have some recourse to cover that, I would be in favor of that. And then to member Camp Car's point, I was not, again, on council during Harvey, but I was, you know, passing out drinks and pastries and stuff to our first responders. And I, I do remember their frustration over trying to find access to available, you know, boats at the time to do some water rescue. So I would be in favor of moving forward and putting my support behind trying to acquire some, at least few boats for us to have access to. That's all I have, Mayor.
Yeah, I think it's a good comment that, that I think our emergency responders need to have certain tools. I just want to be careful that, you know, we have storing X number of boats that they're not just sitting. What happens in the, you know, in the interim, you know, those types of things. So just need to be careful how we, how we do that. I think we need to have some. But what's that ultimate number is a, is a, is a, is a good discussion to have.
How many water rescues did we do during Harvey? Do we know high-water rescues? Because I know we had also dump trucks and stuff out and we lost.
So, so keep in mind, if I could, you know, we can reshare all that. But we, we executed high-water rescues, as you said, improvised with trucks. We did not have but two of the surplus military vehicles that we deployed. And then two, a city, two cities brought us two more. Those were invaluable. So trucks will get you so far and we need those. And we've actually, you know, as was stated, got a, a good fleet of those and they work. And that's why you have more than you need actually, so you can scrap them for parts or, you know, that, that's just the nature of them, but they came to us free. And then the next level up then is the boats. And so, because they've, any truck can't get into everywhere and there may be some other situations. And as the mayor said, you know, you've got to be cognizant of that. These are in case kind of things. You know, you can, we can come up with any kind of scenario for any kind of a situation that you need everything. And that's the balancing act. So, but I'm not saying I'm, and then there's the, not only the storage, you know, but you got to train on them. You just can't put people into them and you got to do, that's all, it's a, it's a heavy lift. And, you know, we need to step up to that at some level, but we can flush that out more.
Councilmember Perez.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I would say, let's, let's caution what we're using this item to discuss. Obviously, this is a mid-year allocation. So we're, we're basically just saying, hey, we have extra money that we, or we had more money come in than we had budgeted. That happens to us every year because we're conservative about our revenue sources. How do, how do we want to reallocate this money based on the priorities we set in the previous year? I do think, you know, emergency response and emergency vehicles, that's cer- that's certainly a, a discussion we should have. But, and, and we can ask staff to gather a memo and even include it in the, as a fiscal year twenty-twenty-two expenditure. But I don't think reactionary posture for mid-year, mid-year allocation, unless there is something like it's broken and needs to be fixed right now, is, is appropriate use of how we, how we operate these funds. I think, and I've said this in the past, you know, I, I would like us, as we, as we know cognit- cognitively that we underfund the street and drainage or the street and sidewalk repair. We know that we're, you know, less than a quarter of what we need, that that becomes a priority. You know, I, I think all of these items are certainly valuable and they're not, they're, they're not a significant expense. But, you know, I would still much rather the majority of the, the majority of the money or at least the plurality of the money go into stepping up the street sidewalk repair that we know, we cognitively know we underfund every year. I think Fire Station Two and Three, echoing the points, we, we did have a bad consultant. We got a little stuck with them. They screwed up a lot of things. We're going to have to pay for it. And I know that, you know, I know we fired those guys, told them they're not going to do any more projects. But if there is recourse, I would certainly be supportive of that. I, I don't want to be excessively litigious. I don't want to get a law drawn out lawsuit, but let's get the repairs done and let's, let's explore what our options are. Also, a dovetail on what I said before, that the hub, hub tracking. I don't know if I'm okay with this as a mid-year allocation. I am okay with the expenditure because, you know, creating, creating some sort of hub certification and tracking and hub zones and all that stuff, that helps us to, helps us stand up a council, that's basically an unstated council initiative where we're trying to use more local businesses in this area. So if we had a hub zone, we had some, and we knew there was some certi- or we created some certifications for historically underutilized businesses for the city of Pearland, and that became a standard for which we do awards, then we could say, you know, twenty-five percent of the award for any of our construction projects must be a, you know, Pearland hub or a, a state hub business. And then that allows us to, to help recycle some of our own dollars into our own community, which has been a priority for us. I know that I'm oversimplifying it and I'm, I'm probably, Trent's probably over there shaking his head as to how simplified I'd make it. But maybe that's, by, by going down this path, that helps us to better meet that council goal without the state limitations for expenditure sitting on top of us. I would like, as part of the, this mid-year allocation, as I alluded to before, depending on the value and what we deprioritize from this list, use that for the, a, a study of the sidewalks so that, you know, we have, we, we are better prepared in fiscal twenty-twenty-two to find out, you know, how do we want? We, we've all said that we're, we're interested in a capital project for, for sidewalk. Or if I'm oversimplifying that or stating something that the council has been there, well, please correct me. But I believe that we've said we're interested in moving forward with sidewalk as a capital project. You know, if we can get this in, in mid-year, get this study done and, and then be ready by fiscal, by the time we're adopting this budget to say, we're moving forward on this path. I think that better prepares us to do this either in twenty-twenty-four as a bond project or as a capital project for twenty-twenty-two or twenty-twenty-three. So I, I would much prefer that to be as a mid-year allocation because I think that prepares us better for that council initiative. And that's all I have.
Sure.
Yeah, just a quick comment. I think I may have missed Mayor Protem Hernandez's discussion on this as I walked back in. But I remember seeing somewhere when I was reviewing this about condensation problems, that two of the fire stations in the attics. And if I remember the numbers correctly, four hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and thirty thousand to remedy this. I can't find it in my handout now.
It's on page thirty-four of tab two.
Tab two?
Yes, sir, page thirty-four.
That's like some, some real expensive humidifiers.
No, no, it's, it's a larger issue with, th- those are more effect of the condensation of other problems with HVAC.
How old are these buildings?
They're five years old, six years old.
Okay. Is that some kind of design flaw?
We're going to be getting into that deeper, but yeah, they obviously haven't held up like they should.
I know a few good attorneys. That's all.
Mayor, I just wanted to.
Well-stated.
If I could, Mayor, just to remember Rose's point, and I don't recall exactly, so I'm just going to throw this out there. Staff doesn't have to respond right now, but in the future, just, I, I was initially leaning toward streets and sidewalk or the mid-year allocation as well. But if I remember proper, correctly, we had this come up previously. And whenever we made the move to try to move more into streets and sidewalks, I believe that we were told that it was a capacity issue given timelines. And then to the comment about trying to fund an additional study, there's something here and I have the same issue that member Little has. I couldn't remember where it was, where there was a point where we're spending more money on the study than we're actually spending on the actual work being done. So I just wanted to say that initially I was for that as well, but that was kind of the reason, just an internal capacity issue of not suggesting that as well.
Hey, as we, as we move forward, it's twenty till noon-ish. What y'all's appetite for going today? Want to set a limit at one o'clock, try to get through the rest of this? What y'all's appetite?
Looks like we've got a lot still ahead of us, Mayor.
We do. That's what I'm getting to.
Yeah, what would all, our, our, our alternative be other than setting up a?
A secondary meeting.
Yes, sir.
Where we finished it. And, I mean, there's just a lot of material to try to get through in a three to three and a half hour period. So, count, member. in a three to three and a half hour period. So, count, member Camp Cor.
I'm, I'm open to do it later today or another meeting or go to one. All those are viable.
If I could, I think we kind of told staff just for our planning purposes, you know, till about one at the longest today. And we'll pick up the pace. I mean, frankly, we've gotten through some of them that usually take quite a bit of time, but by same token, there's the others that will. So if we just get, do best we can, add it through one, I think we'll make a good dent and then we'll have to regroup and come back to you for a follow-up. So.
Sounds good. Okay. Words ahead.
If I could, then the next paper's on the internal service funds. And if I could, it'd be a little bit more strategic than just the title. This is really part of our overall effort towards moving towards regular sustaining our operations and maintenance. And you can do that very effectively through these internal service funds where those costs are isolated, saved up for, budgeted, projected. And so we've had success on that with Motor Pool, just a start of that. We were not there to the ultimate, but we've got a plan and that's, that's the idea. And so with this, we're, as we've said at other times, we'd like to move towards additional internal service funds that would provide us that same opportunity. So I won't belabor the specifics. I mean, this talks about facilities fund and we got, and technology, we have major, major investments in those and these help smooth out those costs. And you know, all the pluses of having them. So just wanted to touch on that. I would hope there's understanding and concurrence of that, but just want to throw that to you.
I think it's certainly something as we move forward. And as I say, you know, eight, 10, 12 years down the road, when we're certainly more of a maintenance-driven city, less growth, these are the types of things that we need to be looking at. I know Councilmember Orlando and I had a conversation earlier this week along those same exact lines. How do we, how do we position ourselves for that one in time where our growth rate is really much lower? I think this, these are the types of things that we need to be looking at long-term.
Yeah, fundamentally, and we're going to get to it later today or another time on the, you know, the streets and sidewalks and everything. But fundamentally, we have all these huge maintenance expenses coming up and we need to, we know that they're coming up, but we're not setting aside any money at this point yet to, to deal with those. And so doing that in a structured way, you know, we, we know we're going to have vehicle expenses. We know we're going to have IT expenses. We know we're going to have facility expenses or just setting up each of those accounts and then determining the funding mechanism for them is going to be essential if we want to keep having nice things.
Any other comments, questions?
Apologies. So the next one is, and we call it employee toll rewards, but it's getting towards, you know, what's been talked about in different venues of, you know, upgrading and modernizing our benefits system and merits and so forth. You know, the, the amounts that you see on page 45, those give you the array of different levels of pay increases, aggregate and by fund. And you can see that obviously, you know, those are frankly a function of each budget year and how we make our projections and what we can afford. So we've been in that center of there. So there's the numbers itself and what's available. And then there's a question of how you allocate that and tie that into a larger system. So, you know, just trying to preempt a little bit, I mean, if there's interest, and I know, I believe there is, maybe that gets specified and then we can come back with some alternatives and options more thought through rather than just philosophical of merit pay, no merit pay, COLA, no COLA kind of thing. Reality is it'll probably be a combination of that and we'll take time and it'll take, we got to have the funding to make it worthwhile, whatever we do. So that's all.
Questions, comments?
I mean, I think in this section, really what I'd like to focus on is, is more the merit, merit pay. And I mean, it's been discussed, but we don't have to go into a detail now, but I want to reward the staff that do excellent jobs and, and not reward and run, run the few off that aren't doing any good. I mean, an organization this size, there's going to be some, some bad apples. Let's run them off. But, but, I mean, if, if you check the box and say, yes, I survived another year, you get the same raise as somebody that did an excellent job. That's just not right. It's not how it's done in the, out in the real world. So I look forward to that. Appreciate it being notated here and I look forward to seeing that coming.
Councilmember Perez?
Yeah, I would, I would echo that. You know, we, we do, we have historically had a combative conversation necessarily about COLA allocation each and every year for all employees versus a merit pay. I think that we'll have a stronger, stronger organization when there is reward, more reward for better work. I think that there is a set standard for COLA and we've used whole number percentages as a standard, but maybe as comp in class, we come up with a, a policy for how do we completely, how do we absolutely measure the COLA in every year based on the market. So instead of just 2%, because it's 2%, we say, hey, look, the cost of limited adjustment per whatever federal department helps us to measure that is, is 0.75% or 1.25% for this year. We make that adjustment every year. And then those, those employees that work for us that are doing an outstanding job, get something on top of that. Those who work for us that maybe need to seek other employment or encouraged to go seek other employment. You know, I think for any organization, we, we have to have that, that standard. And I think some of the issues of the chilling billing are kind of a consequence of not, not being able to reward those who are doing outstanding work. So I think that that is, that is certainly something worth doing. I also think, Clay, I think we, you and I've had this conversation in the distant past, but maybe it's part of the comp in class study. We take a look at the benefits program, benefits outside of what we spend financially, but some of the soft benefits. You know, we have other government agencies that offer more holidays. You know, is it a benefit to us to offer more holidays that are in, that match what other cities are doing? Because that can help us retain employees. Some of those kind of soft policies that other cities are doing that, you know, allow us to have staff that, that want to stay on because they can't, they, they can't duplicate that in the private sector. That's all I have, Mayor.
Member Camp Car?
Oh, yes. Mayor, I, I think when we're looking at the merit pay, I agree with member Carbon and Perez. I think it's very interesting that we're trying to adopt OKRs and we're trying to incentivize better performance. I would tell you, I'm not impressed if we go and I would not be in favor of doing merit pay if we're not going to be in blending a rank in the system. At some point, we have to determine who are the high performers, who are in the middle and who are lagging. If we're not willing to do that, or if we're going to just constantly repurpose people to new jobs, we might as well not even have this discussion. And the, the OKRs are a good guideline to, are we achieving those goals? Yes or no? And can we pay accordingly? I would draw the council's attention to page 46 of tab two. There's a line that stuck out to me. Top paragraph quote, while there are many reasons for this pattern, the biggest driver is new staff primarily in public safety that are required to catch up and serve a population of 130,000. I think it's a really interesting point to put these in public safety. We've obviously had to stand up a fire department. But the reality situation is I think we have numerous openings in the police department that are still unfilled. Some of that is probably because our compensation is inferior to other cities. As we've had our own discussions as a council, I think we've had resumes that come by that are, are less than lagging or less than desirable. And that's because we're probably not paying appropriately. As somebody who works in the private sector, I want to be paid for my talent and I don't mind implementing that as a, a policy. But the reality situation is we're not going to get our back, our back positions filled with inferior pay. So I'm not against pay increases. I'm not against improving pay, but the folks that are high performers should get paid appropriately and those that aren't probably need to, you know, redefine what, what they want to do with their career. But the reality situation is you cannot pay a COLA every year for, as member Carbon says, surviving to the next review.
Yeah, Mayor, to, to help illustrate that a little bit more, the very next sentence, and I had this in my notes that I was going to bring forward was in fiscal year 20, the city funded a 2% COLA equal to 1.1 million and the 14 full-time employees that were added new in public safety also equaled another 1.1 million. So it's, it's clear that we, we do need to be aggressive in how we approach compensation in the city. One thing that stood to me in the recommendations, number four in the SIC buyback program, and it wasn't specified here, but I was just curious if there would be a cap on that. And if there's not, I mean, obviously I'd be in favor of that cap for the accrual.
Yeah, that one, that idea's come up and I think it's, it's complicated. I'd rather address it elsewhere.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, that's fine. I just wanted to give that input. Things to consider, the COLA, trying to, I guess, bring it back to member Camp Car's point, you know, I'm, I'm for that, but I think we have to be more aggressive in indeed holding the low performers accountable. So I would just echo what member Camp Car said. And then also I wrote down, I saw that tiers were mentioned across several memos and I'm using one where we talked about using tiered systems to create a career path. And I said, I'm, I know that's not in this specifically, but I think it should tie into this because it was mentioned, like I said, more than one memo. But I, I don't necessarily agree with adding additional time and place raises. I think it has to be tied to something. Certifications, tests, the numbers of whatever widgets made, something like that. There's got to be a better indicator than just saying that your career path is dictated on how long you've been with the city. So on those tiered paths that are mentioned, that's my feedback there where I think it's related to this discussion. So that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Questions, comments?
Thank you. And then really, unless somebody wants to say something, we just wanted to put a report in there about the community development fee structure, that that's being undertaken internally and more to come on that. So next, tab three, Safe Community. We've got four items there. Member Owens had touched on, you know, the wide variety of things there. And really, something's been very good for us and useful as a growing department and professionalizing was that 17 City Gate Service Plan. Probably need to look towards upgrading that and updating that. Now we got these stations online, but very thorough and I thought very well done recap of those recommendations and just throw that to you if council wants to comment on any of those.
Any questions, comments? We're under tab three, correct?
Yes, sir.
Good, good update. I, I do think, and I agree with staff that it's time to update that. I mean, we've, we've done a lot since that 17 study and it's time to update it and maybe we can fine tune what we're doing.
Would that be a full study or is it just, is there a tweak?
So I, I would suspect, I'm afraid that, you know, there's a lot of number crunching and travel times and looking at the raw data of the calls. And so, you know, that has to be repeated and done from private, yeah.
Oh, is, is now the time or do we wait till McCord is open?
So I would suggest that, but we can probably, I'm sorry to jump ahead of you, but I would suggest that because that's going to change our profile. And those, if you look at page 14, that's one of my favorite maps, but that shows you the station deployment and the travel times from there. But, you know, it'd be interesting to see that with McCord and how that other areas pick up with that.
I, it, it may be that we, I mean, I think we can anticipate what McCord's going to do, but we may wait until that's done to know for sure. I think it's a good idea to update it because our growth patterns may have changed when this was done to see where, where and what next.
Like a jail cell.
Right. Right. Well, and I think we're looking at one off Bailey, you know, future growth down off of County Road, you know, 100, when, when and if that takes off as a development down there, those types of things. But.
It'll probably be the third study.
Right. Right.
If you don't mind, then the Police Academy, I'm sorry, if I could, Clay, I just wanted
to say there's one in here on page four, and it's listing the recommendations and it says one of them that's not started and I think is, goes to a theme that we've been talking about a lot, which is adopt city council deployment measure policies. So it's like with this and with anything else, what is, what does a successful fire department look like? We, we haven't, as a council, said what that does look like. What are the, what are the measurements that we're using? So I, I think as we start setting these goals citywide and paying more attention to that, there's a big opportunity here as well.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes, Mayor. I think in this item, just quickly, I think that we need to prioritize the construction or the implementation of Fire Station 7. We, we put it off. If you can see in the map, we've got that south end of the city that's, that's uncovered. Mayor, that includes your neighborhood and so, and also our, our high school, a couple of, actually two high schools. I, I don't, I don't see an advantage to waiting four years to get that done when we know it's an underserved area. I'd rather get that. I think we were in the, in the process of doing the, the property allocation. I think we need to finish that up and get the, and get that project moving, particularly now when the, I think it'll lose over the next couple of years, the construction costs are going to be significantly cheaper. So that would be my priority.
Just, just for the record, it's, it is covered. You know, every, the whole city is covered in the ETJ, but I, I hear the point. We, we own that land.
You're a whole, 100% right. I apologize. It's not, it's not covered to the, the standard for which we wanted, we set with the, with the, with the study. We have a, for lack of a better term, maybe deficient coverage in that area than the other areas where we have more aggressive coverage. So I'd much rather try to get that project moved forward and have that, have that going as opposed to waiting. I just don't see the advantage in waiting when we already know we need it.
Mayor Camp Car?
I think member Perez is correct. We do need it. I, I would tell you, I would like to see a revised study just for the amount of resources that you have to stand up. That means personnel, that means trucks, that means facilities. We're not buying a boat here. You know, we're buying 10, 11, 12, $13 million of assets plus recurring costs. And right now I can't identify a gigantic community or body of folks that we're serving. We're just trying to fill a gap. And I think for the fiscal prudence of what we're doing, I'd like to see a study demonstrating that, looking at our times before we just start spending money willy-nilly.
Clay, what's the, what's the general cost of that study?
Round numbers, 70, I think is in my head. Yeah.
Councilmember Camp Car, you, you muted. I'm not, somehow you muted. I'm sorry. There you go. Somehow you muted. I, I cut you off. I apologize.
No, no, you're fine. I, I had no further comments. I just, my, my thesis is just, let's have a study. Let's look at our times before we commit to the eight, 10, $12 million. Let's, let's identify where we're at.
And we'll lay out a plan for that when the timing is right. I, if I, I could recommend, I think we need to have that to understand what we're getting into. Building a station is kind of the easy part and just to start staffing it, getting the equipment is the long lift. So we got to be cautious of that.
Right.
You know, there, there was that Pete's study and I think there was one that was called for on, by Country Place. And instead we concentrated those rather than building two stations. And I think that was where, our stations are always funny on how they number things.
Sir, Fire Station 6 is located in Holiday Lakes. It's that one that's way out in the east.
There you go. That's right. That's the.
Fire Station 9 is the one that we combined with Fire Station 8.
We, we got rid of that or.
Like, it's like 13. It's like you don't have a 13th floor in a hotel. You know, it just, it just disappeared. Right. Right. Any other questions, comments on that? Keep rolling.
So the next one is on our Police Academy and congrats and hats off to the entire police team. They've, they've always been committed to training and lifelong learning and staying on the, the front edge. And the, the next iteration of that, as we continue to mature and have a, a large department and keeping up with the complex operations and demands, it would be to have our own academy rather than us sending people, you know, primarily lately to Pasadena, but there's others around the metro. We've got the talent that can help coordinate that and bring in other people. We've got a great opportunity with old Fire Station 4 that's going to be, you know, we can repurpose that and not have to build a new building. It'll be capital. There'd be capital cost towards that. But, so we start to outline that whole cost, raise the expenses for operating and build out there. So I wanted to give you a flavor for that as we move forward in our planning. If there's any questions or concerns, try to answer those.
Comments, questions? Just one, Mayor.
Yeah, just one. How, have we had much in the way, well, one, I'd say I'm fully supportive of this. I'd like to see if we can create a regional training facility where we've got Manville, Iowa Colony. I know that they're growing and going to have a need for more PD, that maybe they can help or are willing to help, like dedicate their staff to come into with this, and we have kind of a guaranteed revenue fund for that, or they can help support the construction of this, where, I mean, maybe it's not Pearland, but it's, you know, Pearland, Manville, Iowa, and that we don't have to, we can help train the cities that are adjacent to us, get better rapport with our community partners as we grow into each other, and also maybe save a little money by them contributing.
Have you had any comments or conversations with those two cities?
Yeah, I mean, once we get ours up and running, but as is laid out there, we want to get it established. We want to run some classes through just internally. We've got, we always have openings, just natural attrition, and so, want to get our feet underneath us and then definitely move into that, just like we've been going to Pasadena, establish ourselves even more as the Bressory County Center for those.
But then I guess member Perez's point would be, you wouldn't have them contribute anything upfront to the capital cost, they would just pay on a recurring basis.
I don't know how we'd structure that proportionally. I mean, they'd want some guarantees about, if I were them, about slots and so forth, and I don't know if we'd be in a position to offer that. I think it'd be better to build that into the cost and say, hey, you're paying for a part of the building when you send your registrants like anybody else.
Got it, appreciate that.
Yeah, I had a note, I had a meeting and just was curious, I was told that currently our police officers are driving south to Bressory to qualify for mandatory firearms certification. Just, have we looked at what it would be to bring a range here to the city of Pearland? Is that something?
There's different aspects to that. I mean, Ron, if you want to try to cover that, you have, you've qualified once or twice.
Last month. Yes, sir, we actually have, we actually have a project in our, in our 10-year CIP right now, I believe it's 10 years, that we're looking at not only the qualification range, but also the driving track available for our officers to maintain their skills, which we're, you know, verifying location and building up and making sure we have all of the requirements for environmental support in building that.
Would that add any additional value to the academy specifically and getting other agencies to participate and defer some, or rather defray some of the costs?
Absolutely. If we have that, so right now, we have to contract out for those facilities and with the Bressory County Medical Officers Association and with the, and with Pasadena Police Department. So if we have that, not only do we have that resource available for our cadets and officers to utilize, but we can also provide training across the region to other departments and, you know, other law enforcement agencies for drive training to other emergency responders like fire departments, EMS, so on and so forth, as well as doing our own staff.
Okay, and so, just one last piece to clarify. It says that opening academy could produce a revenue stream of $20,000 or more for the service, and you said you're looking, it would be reasonable to assume as many as 20 graduates is produced annually at full operation, and that's talking about graduates of the entire, like, academy from start to finish. That's not including other training opportunities that we can potentially generate revenue from contracting to other agencies, is that correct?
Correct. The academy operation is, you know, the numbers you see here are isolated from our regular training program.
Okay. Well, I would be very interested to see what other opportunities are there to generate revenue for this. I appreciate it, thank you.
I guess I was just asking on the range thing, I heard the 10-year CIP, so is the thought that that could be a future addition to this, would be the thinking there?
For the driving range, or driving and, which, for the 10-year, I'm sorry.
For the shooting range.
Shooting range, I mean, we've had some preliminary discussions about some property that city owns, about doing something like that towards the south, so I don't even know if we've gotten into a budget mode yet on that, frankly.
And I just, just something to think about there, I'm like, we're paying people, my understanding, overtime and mileage to go out to these other facilities and do that, that might be a modest consideration, but would, you know, we would save that money if we had our own here.
Just keep in mind, all these things are like offsetting some of the costs. I mean, I don't want anybody going into this, it's still, all you're doing with bringing in people, they're paying for parts of the instructor, part of the overhead, you know, it's not going to be significant towards an offset, but it's an offset.
That was the question I had, had, do, have we identified, or how much land would a, would a driving track take up? I mean, obviously, our city is rapidly building out in small, small areas of vacant property, so I was just wondering if we've identified and where would we, have we secured land?
So currently, we're looking at the, if anybody recollects the old city dump, which is.
Trying not to say that because it doesn't sound very good, but.
We're doing environmental studies right now to determine whether or not we can use portion of that to support this facility without.
If it's a repurpose of land, why not? As long as it's safe.
I guess the other thing is, can we use any of our drainage facilities? We own that land anyway, and there were like the, some of the soccer fields, we have them tiered out there. You know, just some ideas.
Certainly something to look at. Any other comments or questions? All right, let's move on.
And next one, Fire Emergency Medical Services, council aware, we've, we've been very well served by our current emergency medical provider, but they've had changes in their other partners, and so they're getting through that. We need to put this out for proposals, so we're marking that, and we're also looking out towards the future, that as we grow and mature, here's another area where we need to start looking at, probably looking at bringing in-house that work, and it's a significant operating dollar amount that would be new, but the risk reward would probably be there. We're well-served now, so, but it's a question of, you know, just taking it up a higher level, so. And this process that we're going through for the proposals this fall will kind of help frame, you know, win financially at least, that, that needs to be considered even more.
To just help us get through this quickly, are you looking for feedback on which option?
If, if there's a comfort in looking towards eventually option two, I think that's the way we've framed it. That's the one that the chiefs would, you know, ask us to stretch towards.
Okay. If we just want to, remember Owens, do you have a preference of those options? Number Little?
Yeah, I'm fine with option two. I think it does bear quite a bit more discussion, but as of right now.
Yeah, I'm kind of in the same spot. I want to see more discussion on it, but let's tackle that then.
Perez? An appetite for any of these?
I'm good, yeah. I think I agree. I agree we need to move forward with the item. I'm perfectly happy to move forward with the well, council.
Okay, and member Cam Carr?
I'm more comfortable right now with option one. I'd like to see more discussion on it. I think it sounds great to bring everything in-house, but for where we are as a city with the amount of dollars that we need to do, we have discussions on the sidewalk, we have discussions about other items. You know, this is one thing where if it ain't broke, don't fix it.
And I guess I'll say, that's kind of echoing what I would feel as well. Option one is what, where I'm leaning currently, but I would definitely see more information on bringing it in-house. Does that give you enough direction, Clay?
And the next paper's on the emergency management preparedness, and this is framed as pretty specific to the 22 budget, some things we're looking at bringing forward. So we've heard talks about boats, and that's outlined in here. You know, I would suggest that that deserves, you know, some understanding, and if we can get, you know, apart from the mid-year, bringing that in part of the budget, but if council wants us to do that quicker, we obviously will. And then, you know, some other things about, I believe the pay, IMT was in this one as well, lifts, continuity planning, so there's several very specific budget items that like to get your interest and prioritization on.
Questions, comments? Councilmember?
Yeah, I, I'm in favor of that IMT incentive pay on the boats. I think option two makes the most sense, and everything else, I think staff's on point, and appreciate the memo.
Okay, any others?
Yeah, I concur with that. I think that, I think this is an area where our investments pay pretty huge dividends, so let's, let's make them.
I would just say ditto.
Any other questions, comments? Got some direction on that one, I think.
Okay, next, everybody's favorite, streets and sidewalks, and, you know, again, we go through a very detailed description of the assessments, where we're at, but then we also go into details of some of the areas that are up next on our list, and we do prioritize inventory and prioritize those each year, it's not random. And then we go into the inevitable funding mechanisms and levels for that, so, you know, apologize to a degree that, you know, it's kind of ethereal here that without knowing the whole budget picture, we can all want, you know, the highest level, but, you know, that's really a function of our operating budgets, so I'll just put that on, back to council.
Councilmember Perez?
Thank you. Trying to just state quickly, reiterate what I said, I think we need to do a capital project for the sidewalks, let's move forward with that, let's hopefully get the mid-year allocation to that study. I think, you know, I would like us to initiate a plan moving forward where we either prioritize maintaining our PCI level or increasing it. That kind of goes back to the OKRs, you know, what's, what's we're doing, but we know, we know under this appropriately, let's, let's try and get on a better path, and I appreciate the time staff has put on this. I would also say, you know, this is not, this is not a short-term change, but I really think that we need to have a long-term strategy to remove and replace as much of our asphalt streets as we can over a long period of time. Obviously, it's a generational project, but we can tell now that the asphalt streets just fail repeatedly and require a whole lot of repair, and, you know, any money that we saved by putting an asphalt street 20 years ago as opposed to the concrete we could afford, we spent four or five times over on milling and overlaying and dealing with the failures. So I think at some point, we need to eliminate asphalt as an, as an option for public streets, and then start moving forward with replacing the asphalt streets we have with concrete.
Questions, comments?
Yeah, I would say this is one of those things where the asset management tool and then the long-term planning come into play. We're not just going to budget by budget slowly get there on this. It would take $6.2 million just to keep the streets and sidewalks the same quality, $6.2 million a year. We're not going to get that, we're not going to slowly save up, we're not going to put away $100,000 a year and $300,000 a year to get up to 6.2 sustainably every year. It's going to have to be a, it's going to have to be a huge strategic shift and decision, and I think at this point, what that probably looks like is when the TERS comes back online, allocating some significant percentage of that to these maintenance expenses of all of our stuff in this city, but a big part of that is our streets and sidewalks. We're not just going to be able to chip away at this. I think we've seen that, it's too huge of a thing, and I need to see more analysis here, I don't, I'm not an expert by any means, but I don't really like the idea of doing capital projects to pay for routine maintenance that we can't afford, and then we fall way behind, and then we have to do a big capital project to replace it. If I did do that, I would want to make sure that going forward, we have a system in place to where we are setting aside enough money to fund those recurring improvements. We're not going to, we need some big shift to make that happen, though.
It's a good comment. The only exception I would make to that, and sidewalks, I don't think that what I'm about to say, because their lifespan of the sidewalk is nowhere near what it is like for internal streets to a neighborhood or something like that. So, you know, we have, you know, older neighborhoods, I don't, I don't see necessarily fundamentally anything wrong with coming back in like we're doing in Willacrest with the engineering today of completely rehabbing water sewer streets. Those subdivisions are 50, 50-plus years old, so certainly, they, they are outliving their bondedness, right? Sidewalk doesn't fit that, councilmember, so I agree with you on that, but I think there are some strategic ways where we can do that under a bond program, retrofitting some of these older neighborhoods, you know, as an example. Councilmember Camp, you unmuted.
His kid wants to say it.
Yeah, I'd like to speak. I'm generally uncomfortable putting sidewalks into a bond issue. I'm generally uncomfortable investing more dollars until we can track where we're putting the investment. So if we do an asset management tool, I think it makes sense to go do sidewalks and recurring maintenance, but right now, putting major dollars to avoid pain on this issue when we have so many other items like a call center, police training center, and, you know, fire, you know, that just moves down the list for me.
Mayor, if I could, my thinking on this is, I look at this and I see us kind of making these priorities for these decisions on priorities, based on this PCI, and I see the list here of the streets to be repaved, and just kind of the general network PCI, and I've just, I would be in favor of us finding a better way to create zones or priorities and not just do it based on the actual index that's delivered for each road, but rather what that road actually does for the city, which I'm sure to a degree we're already doing, but for sure, just to drill down deeper into that, whenever the data comes before us, we can understand, you know, how this is actually making a measurable impact, not just repaving roads because they have potholes on them, but rather, you know, the improvement that it's going to provide for traffic flow or just general business movement, things like that. So that's, I would like to see a little bit more of that before we really get into the weeds of establishing a funding mechanism.
Comment, any other comments or questions?
You know, I think some of it, Mayor, you know, it'd be nice to go in and do everything in concrete, but, you know, you've got some road like on Walnut over there, you just bounce along, I mean, you know, with the potholes there, over there, part of it's paved and the other, and, you know, you're going to have to have some repairs, you know, for the asphalt or whatever on the roadways to keep it in, and then, so, you know, I think those things ought to be seeked out by the works, you know, to do some of those repairs. So I think it's going to take a combination of both, but, you know, we don't have the money to come in and take out of a roadway and make it concrete.
I think it, I think it also highlights the fact that we've had a partnership with Bressory County for many years.
Exactly.
Get some of those dollars that we pay into the county, especially road and bridge, coming back into our, our community to rehab the asphalt streets. We've done that over years and years and years. I think it's important that we maintain that type of relationship. I think it's also noted that where we can, like we did with parts of Old Alvin, we, moving it up to McCard Road, we, we replaced that with concrete street.
Yeah.
As an example, I think there's going to be areas, especially north and south roads, O'Day, Roy, Max, all of those types of roads over time can be changed out to concrete curb and gutter, and I think we can take that advantage. And I agree with, with member Perez, that it's going to take a strategic plan, and it's going to be decades in the making. It's a generational type of thing, as he said, not something that you just stand up and do. It's going to take some time and some planning. Any other questions, comments? All right, move forward.
Deal. Next one up is unserved water and wastewater areas. You know, this is a function of where we were able to serve in large part, and as we talk about, I think nicely here, talks about what's involved with that, what the current requirements are, but a project like McCard Road has major advantages for the road itself, but we also put in a major water and wastewater infrastructure alongside that, so that opens up those large areas. The specific council direction found on page 21 of this is some ordinance cleansups that we're recommending and some UDC, and any feedback on that or the larger. And any feedback on that or the larger topic itself interested in here?
Any other comments, questions? Councilmember Perez?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a good idea and concept, but I think we've, we've explored this sometimes in the not-too-distant past. You know, I think our problem is we, we go out there and we put a lot of money into getting a water line over to people and then they, they get upset with us because we have to put, we have to either force them off a well or prevent them from doing something to expand their well system. And then we charge them for the impact fee to connect to the system. I think, you know, before we do an allocation or allocation to extend utilities, we really need to find some way to make sure that the, that area of town wants it as opposed to extending, you know, 12-inch water line on the south side of Bailey and have nobody that wants to connect to it. And it becomes a challenge. I, I just, I'd hate for us to put in a huge investment and then have the people who we intended to serve fight us tooth and nail to prevent us.
Well put. Comment, councilmember?
Yeah, I know during the recent freeze, we had several generators that provide backup power to our lift stations go out. And I know we've approved contracts, maintenance contracts for these services in the past for five or six figures. Any comment on what happened while these generators were not functioning properly?
We'll, we'll get into that in the AR, but we have, I don't quote, we had like 45 generators and we had problems with maybe seven of them. And it was extreme weather. They were all tested. You know, we're looking at different specs going forward, but you know, it was just, you know, percentage-wise, you know, we had those issues. We felt that obviously, but we'll get some more of the after action on the storm.
One other comment. The problem, citizen Jimmy Davis identified us dumping millions of gallons annually of water into the Gulf. Is that an extensive problem?
That's a, no, that's, there's zero problem. In the winter, it's an elevated storage tank that we have to have to keep pressure. And you know, there's less usage. And so a normal accepted maintenance in the scheme of the plant is to shed off some of that on a, when it's required at a minimal times. Thank you, glad. Thank you.
Yeah, and just to reiterate, I think we had a few diesel-powered generators. And when that temperature got to where it, where it did, that diesel starts not freezing, but you know, solidifying a little bit. So I think part of the, yeah, coagulate, yeah. So that's, that's part of the problem. But then also just some, just, you know, starting and stopping failed. I think one blew something.
Station two, it blew a rod and you know, there's nothing you can do to.
There were various circumstances that caused it. The good news is they all were tested and working, had loads on them on Thursday and Friday going into the.
Batteries tested, ran.
Over there.
Et cetera, et cetera.
At the end of the day, what, less than, less than 10% or 10% of them, you know, we had some issues with that we were able to get through it. Maybe it, and again, I think it's spec-driven. What specs do we have from people who are bringing generators out? And maybe that lesson's learned. We have a spec, maybe that spec is one thing in the summer and that spec is something different in the winter as we move forward. If, if there's a difference between the two, maybe that's what we look at.
Those are good answers. I was just asked that question by a couple of citizens who now have an answer for them.
Mayor, I had a question on the cost associated with running these. My note said it's got to be a strategic approach, but I think the question there was, we're looking at underwater and wastewater or the properties that are mentioned on page 20. It says estimated cost of 21 million or 85,935 per property. What, what is the timeframe, I guess, estimated to ever recover? Or do we ever recover those investments in the form of, I guess it would be revenue or impact?
Impact fees, I guess.
Yeah, or impact fees.
It's just part of the system cost to keep it expanding and modernized and up to specs. And so I guess I don't follow. I mean, they're paid for out of the system itself, so.
So do we do any type of, of like a recovery timeline requirement? So if it takes X number of years or whatever?
There's a whole study. I can't remember when you last authorized that for impact fees in the state law and allows you to get back 50% of that, but you have a very specific program for those impact fees that sets that up.
Okay. Yeah, if you could just re-forward that, just so I can look at it, I would, that's the question I had. I've got nothing else.
I just echo what Councilmember Perez said. I mean, if, if we can contact these areas and we know that there's going to be a high utilization, then I wouldn't mind. But just to go out there and lay the lines and then force people onto them, that doesn't make sense.
If there's nothing else, Mayor, I'll keep chugging along. Next one, question that come up and obviously with our surface water plant, we would argue that this is one of our very, very core services that we want to have control over, accountability for. And, but you know, obviously it's a good question, you know, can you contract out some of that stuff? So we at least touched on that with what information we were able to have. And so that's basically what this is doing. So we would recommend we continue with what's planned, regardless if it's a contract or in-house. There's a cost and there is cost estimates built into the CIP already as with all of our other CIPs.
Questions, comments?
Question, what's this, this up and running, I think early 2023? What, what percentage of our water will we still have to acquire from the city of Houston?
Your question, peak-wise, Trent?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear the question.
Once the new surface water treatment facility reflects some base up and running at full capacity, I think it's going to be 10 million gallons per day.
Yes, sir.
How much water will we still be required to obtain from Houston?
So as we move towards build-out, we're going to have to continue to have those contracts in place for the 16 million we have today from City of Houston. You know, but that, that is really built on peaking capacities required through the state regulations. So the majority of the time, as we, as the system develops out, we'll be able to run that new surface water plant at lower cost to produce water versus the, the 6 million gallon connection point with City of Houston on the west side of town, which is a higher cost. So we'll still need that 6 million gallon in the summertime. But you know, in, in times where we don't need peak capacity, we'll be able to run off of our, our new plant. So we can't get rid of it, but we can reduce the amount we rely upon that in most times.
If I could remember a little, another factor is not only how much, but where it is. I mean, the city's so long, trying to get it from one end, one corner to the other, it takes pump capacity, everything else, pipes, so.
That one's 6 million or on, on that side from City of Houston?
Yes, sir.
So we're going to produce 10 million out of the surface water plant. So where we're working with 6 million over there, we're going to have to have 16 million. Is that what you're saying?
No, sir. We currently have 16 million from City of Houston. 6 million at the FM 521 West Side Plant and 10 million at the Alice Street Plant.
Okay, but none of that's going to affect our, on the southeast plant in Houston, one that we bought into.
That's the 10 million at Alice Street.
Yeah.
That's the southeast plant.
Yeah, at that one, that was the one we did the study on and said, you know, we can run the line over to the west side. And the difference we're paying for water between that and what we're paying for the west side over there, we could actually do the construction and do other parts to the water line, the design and the construction and pay for that in nine years, just in the difference in the prices. When we looked at it in the beginning, we looked at discontinuing that from the city of Houston on the west side. Yeah. That's why we had that study done.
But when we looked at that McCard line to bring that water over to the west side, it was not to eliminate that. We knew we'd still have to have that for peaking requirements based on the state regulations. But it was that we would not necessarily rely, we wouldn't have to rely on that during normal, you know, normal usage.
It's a take or pay.
So it significantly would reduce what we have to pay for out there because it's, we pay for what we take.
Yeah. You pay for what you take or is it take or pay? You get so much per day and you pay for that.
It's, it's a combination. So there's an amount set that, that we pay for regardless. And then we pay a premium when we use over, over that amount. So as we get the system built out and we get our surface water plant built, we can look at what we can, what the contracting mechanisms are there to, to change that.
Yeah, so I think I've asked for a workshop on water, wastewater infrastructure in general coming up, maybe at the end of March, early April timeframe. And I think it'd be, it would be a good opportunity to do a deep dive into, Trent, how we got where we are now? What's the total build-out of the city? What does that look like in billions of gallons a day? Where's, where are all of those resources coming from and how all that fits together? People can see the, I guess, the puzzle of pieces that have been put together over time to see how this works. But I also want to make sure that we get, you know, talking about staffing for that surface treatment plant and not.
Sure. And it's appropriate time to do that now because we're wrapping up water and wastewater models, which have changed, you know, over time, exactly what is being proposed to completely serve the city in the future.
Right.
So we'll do that.
But all of that, this, this workshop, and we'll know, you'll see more about this on Monday night in our, we have an agenda item about scheduling coming up and just to talk about that. But if anybody, does, does anybody have other questions about staffing for the wastewater, not the wastewater, the surface treatment?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Oh, go ahead, Member Campcor.
Yeah, I, I thought the write-up was really good. I would tell the, the members of the council, I would prefer us to be very conservative on the staffing here. The reality situation is we're three years out from this being developed. And this is the preliminary ask. This ask will go up because governor never goes smaller, it goes bigger. The other thing I would say is on the alternative options, it's great to see the financial impacts of going outside the shop, but it's very interesting that on the last page, on page 26, the financial impacts of keeping the staff as City of Carolina employees is noticeably absent. So that's clearly by design. I would ask that those impacts be shown so we can actually review the data on an apples-to-apples comparison.
Good comment, councilmember?
Yes, Mayor, so I would like to also see that breakdown. But in addition to that breakdown, there's another one as well on, under the note or the anticipated reduction. It's expected these positions will provide a cost-saving to the city by reducing outsourced services for mechanical and electrical maintenance, which we expend approximately 200,000 annually. And then it says reduction is expected related specifically to electrical lab contract and so forth. Of that total amount that's listed 200,000 annually, if we get a breakdown of where specifically, because I see those are tied to positions. So if we can justify the position with that current spend, I think I'd be more apt to say okay or no, depending on what that, that breakdown is. I think the only one that I'm just kind of, I think I see full value in the future proposed positions would be the instrument control technician, simply because if we are moving to a more data-driven approach to things, having somebody to manage the SCADA system and really make sure that that's super-integrated, I think would be good. Other than that, I'm okay with the two high levels. Looking forward to the next, you know, several years, I just want those positions to be broken down to give us a better idea of how much we're currently spending outsourcing to justify those positions. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
And real quick, I guess, we, we've got about 30 minutes left. How much more material do you think we will, think we're there?
We're really good because the, the next one is 20 seconds. And then it's like into the staffing piece of it, which is probably makes a little bit more time.
20 seconds, I'm going to hold you to it.
Okay. So flipping over to tab six, that paper is more of a, I don't want to say a victory lap, but just explaining the dedication and the flexibility of our staff during the pandemic and still continuing outreach and programs, particularly out of the Parks Department. They've just done fantastic job doing different things and doing things a different way by necessity and a lot of support from communications to make that happen. So really appreciate all that. So nothing to add, no budgetary issues for that.
That was tab six?
Yeah, that's right. Sorry.
Any other comments or questions on that?
Just want to say here, here to staff, one thing I didn't mention earlier about emergency preparedness is I think it would be beneficial to us to show the flexibility and adaptability of our staff and put that, put that out into the ether. Because I think that if we can appeal to the state or even federal agencies and say, look, we're a city that's ready, prepared. Our employees are, you know, on a moment's notice, able to mobilize and set up these phenomenal events delivering COVID vaccines and so forth, that we're a city that deserves prioritization as far as, you know, federal dollars, state dollars and allocation of other resources. I think that's something that definitely needs to be highlighted and put out and we need to, you know, push for that.
And no, and, and no one will tell that story except us.
Yes, sir.
Questions, comments?
1920. All right, and then tab seven, I think is the next thing we want to talk about. And that's our staffing outlook. And I'll stipulate that this is, I won't say raw from the departments, but this is sort of what they shared as, you know, call it whatever you want, best worlds, staffing, kinds of things, needs. And I think this is a starting.
Wishlist.
Apologize?
Wishlist.
Try to stay away from that, but yeah. So this is, this is that, and it's a starting point. Obviously, these are constricted by operations and budgets and everything else. Page four provides a summary. I don't know how council wants to approach any questions on this, but you know, those groups by areas might be one way to approach that, you know, in terms of fiscally responsible, safe community and so forth. And this says outlook. I retreat from that word. I think it's just a summary of what the papers are. It's not our outlook. It's, it is what it is, so. But entertain any questions or clarifications we can offer up. I will say when we get staffing requests at budget time, we go back and compare to this because if somebody, you know, didn't anticipate a staffing need in here, it makes it hard to justify, you know, going forward. So that's part of the planning purpose that we go through ourselves.
Right. Questions, comments from council?
I, I'll probably send a lot of these via email, but one, one thing that I wrote down, and this is specifically regarding the city secretary's memo, but there was a line in there that says loss of institutional knowledge due to attrition where there are limited positions. And they're talking about just trying to justify adding additional positions. One question that I wrote was, do we know how this would prepare, how this would compare, rather, to investing more in the existing employees rather than just trying to bring on new employees to fight loss of institutional knowledge and so forth?
Ronnie, you're closest to that. You want to talk about that?
Yeah, the, the, the issue in that regard is we've basically had 100% turnover in that department within the last year and a half. And with that, all of the institutional knowledge left, we weren't in a position to pay people to stay. And, and so in that regard, you know, it, it went away. There, you know, expanding the department would probably alleviate that, that hazard in some regard. You know, i- if we're in a position to pay people to stay, then, then of course, that's always, it may be less painful than adding staff. But you know, it's a, it's a department of four people. And so one person is 25% and not many departments across the city have that.
Yeah, and I know this, it would be difficult for us to say, you know, do we want to provide more flexibility to potentially try to, you know, better invest in the existing employees and not try to create a, you know, put ourselves in a position to where somebody's saying, oh, well, I know that they're going to pay more if I threaten to leave. You know, I don't think our employees would do that, but it's difficult to say things, you know, sometimes and put them out there. But would that be something that we could even consider drawing up a framework on providing that flexibility in those scenarios? Because.
We, we do some of that. I mean, somebody said they got another offer and we, we want to keep them. We say, well, what is it? And we try to sometimes go back at it. But I, I don't think we should avoid frankly, the fundamental issue. They're related. I mean, if there's four people and they're doing the work of six, you can pay them all you want and it still doesn't work. So we need to step up and prioritize and, you know, take, recognize that we're a different, larger city and we need to have the people there to take care of things the way we expect them to.
Okay. And I guess I had been asking for quite some time about just better organization of the records as it. the records as it pertains to council requests and so forth, but also the way that it's presented to the public as far as, uh, moving to a system, even with the agendas in the minute, so that you could better tie those two together, show voting records more easily, things like that. Um, I would like to see some specifics on how these positions would better enable us to move to a system like that that helps us to be more transparent. I do see this kind of generally touched on, but I don't see more specifically, um, how they would address some of the council requests. So. But I can send that, like I said, in a follow-up email. Uh, it doesn't have to be addressed here. Thank you.
My general comment on this section is we're, we're investing millions into IT and, um, and new technologies that should make us work more efficiently. You know, specifically with AMI, um, getting rid of meter readers. So I, I guess generally speaking, um, you know, I don't see any negatives on this page and, um, I just want to make sure that we're, we're leveraging technology to the fullest because it seems like every time big technology spin comes up, it's talking about how more, much more efficient we'd be. Just, just a general comment. Councilmember Campcar?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, I'm, I'm just generally touching on the staffing, um, page 33, tab seven, the memo from Mr. Upton about staffing. Uh, I'd like to read the line for the record. Quote, should the request not be fulfilled, we will continue to supplement staff with contracted help, which will be at a much higher cost estimated to be approximately three times the cost and limited to a contracted project. Mr. Upton says something these other memorandums don't say, which is what is the alternative cost? I'd like to see that as we go forward, um, that we quantify what it would be to have an outside helper versus what it would be to bring some of these items in-house. There's obviously a short and a long term to that. Um, for some reason, we just don't fire people when they don't perform and they just stay on and get repurposed. So that might be a five or 10-year cost for those, um, those folks, but we need to be cognizant of what those costs are.
I just wanted to add on top of that, just to, to add to that real quickly. Um, that goes back to the standardization request. So for instance, in communications memo, they had it broken down to an estimated, uh, 32 to 50 hours of additional overtime. I was able to very easily plug that into an equivalent number of hours to justify additional positions. Um, and then also in engineering, they had about, uh, moving from phase two to phase four on our, uh, MS4 designation. And, you know, some of those things are unavoidable and they're going to happen. They're mandated by the state. So just again, standardization of the memos to help us see, look, these are real numbers that are coming forward in the form of overtime, or these are things that are mandated that are going to happen regardless. Um, I would love to see that level of detail presented across all of the different memos. So I appreciate those two, at least in engineering, communications, providing that type of information. Thank you.
Questions, comments, Councilor?
I just kind of reiterate what Councilman, um, Carbone said, um, that, you know, with all the technology, um, the money we're spending on, uh, technology improvements, we don't seem to be cutting manpower, um, year after year. And, um, as we're rapidly approaching build out too, um, it seems like the number of additional staff we would require would also slow. Um, but looking at these forecasts for the next three years, 175 additional employees. I know this is, like Mayor and I said, a wishlist and I know how the process works. You go in and ask for, you know, um, 20, you might end up with 10. I'm a little concerned at these projected growth numbers in light of better technology, more efficient technology and the fact that we're, um, approaching build out. Those are my comments.
I do have a, a question, uh, I guess, Clay, I guess, I don't know if it's going to be Trent or, or someone. Back about a year ago, about this time a year ago, or maybe, you know, in March, I met with both engineering and public works, just, just to talk and get an idea of their, their departments. Both shared that, and I guess what I'm going to say, this is kind of a, a threat to our organization and that is the number of people in their organizations, specifically public works, that are nearing or at, uh, retirement age or retirement, uh, ability to, to retire. And, and it goes back to the, the comment in, in city secretary, and that's that institutional knowledge that literally walk out the door quickly, uh, if we, if, 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 if it wanted to. And I'm not sure if there is a succession plan around that. Clearly if, if those departments, which, I mean, they, they do a tremendous amount of work here, um, and just how are we looking at that, planning for that, addressing that? Again, they, they, they both shared a tremendous amount of people who are at that age or ability to, so. Not sure how we're addressing that.
Yeah, I think that would be something that would be interesting to see and Councilman Little, he talked about the 175, that'd put us over a thousand employees total. We're, I guess, the last of solid 848. But it's not only the salaries, you know, it's the benefits also, you know, the insurances and, uh, different things like that adds to that. So if there's something that, that we're replacing people that are at the twilight of the time to retire, whatever, that would be something I think that would be good to, uh, to look at and use it within, um, the decision of, of that many employees coming on. Retirement, you know, part of it or whatever transition, so.
Questions, comments?
I'll just say I, I somewhat agree with the technology aspect because I did have a note here, um, with, uh, for the permit clerks. I said, I'd like to see specifically information on potential software solutions to support that department as well. Just to, like I said, allow easier self-use in our system. And that's another example. As I'm reading it, is moving to another multi-tiered system. So to get another example in the memos of moving to that tiered system. So trying to tie that back to previous comments. Uh, that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Perez?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I think, uh, maybe to, to reiterate what we're talking about on technology, I, I brought this up in the past, maybe, maybe it's worth, uh, re-exploiting, but, you know, we talk about the failures in our technology and, uh, and how that accounts for, uh, where we can get staff saving. I think, I think most of the time it's the, the issue is that the technology just isn't, it doesn't do what we want it to do. Uh, it doesn't have, uh, it's not as nimble or as flexible or malleable as we, we want, uh, it to be in order to solve problems that are unique to Pearland or particular problems that are routine, but the software developer just has not, uh, prioritized making those changes. My suggestion was we build and stand up an apartment that is a team of coders that builds our own software. Uh, Harris County has done that for their permitting agency. Uh, they built their own, uh, permitting, uh, software. Other cities, um, again, my example was City of Tempe, their municipal court uh, system is completely built off, uh, or everything is managed through their own, um, uh, their, their own in-house program. And they have a team of coders that, uh, that maintains it. And when we find issues like, uh, hey, the software doesn't allow us to evaluate the amount of arrears that we're in because we're in this unique position, we could have somebody go in and we'll code it to make it do that. And in two weeks or however long that, that's done. I think that's where we'll find maximum value when it comes to software and technology. We're, we're going to be constantly at the, the mercy of whoever else develops, uh, develops, uh, technology and how it works for us. And we're always going, we're going to have people who have to be an expert in how this program works and then that adds staff. And we won't, we won't get the efficiency, I think, uh, that we want until we have, uh, better control of, of the software. So, again, that's something we could probably do this year, but if we want to start making that a priority, um, and we can get our financing and permitting and all the other software that we need integrated better because it's our own, uh, that could end up giving us the maximum efficiency that we're searching for.
Questions, comments? All right, move on.
This item is just, uh, we just had two prior updates and a win in terms of the workers' comp self-insurance fund that, uh, council signed off on, on our recommendation and, uh, it's been going well. And then the, uh, smart cities technology, how that's, uh, going forward and helping us be more efficient. So. Nothing to add, sir.
Questions, comments on tab eight? All right. And I don't know how we numbered this, but we go back to number three, next steps.
So, yeah, that's nice.
I didn't even see that until just now.
Either. So confused now. Um, so next steps, uh, we'll, we'll write up, uh, commentaries and ship that out to y'all and make sure we capture, uh, follow-ups and, uh, schedules. We'll tie that so we're accountable to that. And, uh, thank you for your time and attention. And, uh, one last time, this is Mr. McCarter's very last meeting. So thank him for his work and all this, uh, put us in a good place. And, uh, you know, as council said a couple of times, uh, just a ton of work on, on these papers, uh, you know, for you to read them takes time, but you know, to make sure we get these all lined up and edited and, uh, you know, uh, try to standardize them, but, uh, you know, that, that we got to allow some creativity with the departments. So. I want to thank everybody's attention. So.
Thank you. Mayor, if I could, Clay, could you, uh, for the public's, uh, information, can you tell them what the next step for the CIP coming back separately is and what CIP is?
Just the first part of that, I'm sorry.
For the sake of the public's understanding, do you tell them the?
So last year we added a CIP, a meeting separately in, uh, Saturday in June and, uh, uh, we added that on Monday to, uh, specify that to get some council, uh, scheduling on that. So that'd be June 27th, I think, when we targeted, but it really depends on what your schedule's law.
And also just kind of say what the CIP is and why it's separate. Just.
What is it?
10 seconds.
capital improvement programs, anything that's over $50,000 and has a life of, uh, 10 years or more, all, all the pipes and buildings and, uh, parks and, uh, roads.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
All right. Any last comments, questions? I don't see anybody moving to their mic, uh, two online. Appreciate you guys, uh, being there. Hopefully able to keep track of you guys as well when you wanted to, uh, to speak. Uh, with that. Councilor? Oh, uh, with that, let's just, uh, let's see, council input and discussion regarding additional budget related topic. Was there anything? I don't see anything moving. We do have a meeting Monday night, 6:30. Uh, I think you, you probably received your packets already. So, uh, good meeting there and we'll stand adjourned at 12:50.